To open the meeting and convene an executive session with two parts to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation specifically related to APSME Local 1703 clerical staff. As an open meeting may be have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. And to consider the employment agreement for the town planner as an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body with intent to come back to an open session meeting. I do have a second. Thank you, Chris. And all in favor, David? Oops, sorry.
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So we will.
Hopefully it gets squared away.
Hello. Sorry about that.
Well, look who's here.
Look who decided to join the. My apologies, everyone. We are gonna, I will start this right away. It's 7:17. Again, my apologies. So I'll start with the script for the remotely conducted open meetings. As a preliminary matter, this is Justine St. John, Chair of the Board of Selectmen. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I am here as well. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Greg?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Okay, and I think there are a few others on as well. So I see Chief Sowers on as well, and Joanna and Caitlin. Good evening. This open meeting of the Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's orders suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and to take care not to share, screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All of the materials for tonight's meeting, except for any executive session materials, are available on Board Docs. And we recommend the members and the public follow along the agenda as posted on Board Docs unless I know it otherwise. Again, you go to the Selectmen page off of the Town page, go to tonight's packet, and that's where, how you'll access the agenda. We're now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. And further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. And remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait for the chair until the chair yields a floor to you and state your name before speaking. If the members wish to engage in collaboratively with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comment, after members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. And once the chair has a list of all public commentators, I'll call on each name by name and afford three minutes for any comments. And finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. So that being said, we'll turn to the next item on the agenda, which are public comments. Are there any public comments tonight? Okay. All right. I am wondering if we can, if you'll indulge, if we can skip to item seven for the town volunteer recognition. Do, are we good with that? Okay. So we, we have two celebrities at our meeting today. They are amazing volunteers of the town. They were recognized at town meeting. And they are Bob McCarthy, who just finished a 15-year stint on the Finance Committee. And Ellen Duggan, who I don't know how long you have been on your respective committees as well. But you've always been super involved in the town also. So Greg, I'm wondering, do you have anything you want to say first? Do you want me to?
Only, only to, of course, I would repeat everything you said. But as far as the logistics of this evening, there, so one Bob McCarthy is now in my, in my like board. There's Bob. I have. But there he is. So, so to report that last night, Jeff Swanberg and I went to Bob's house and we dropped off the actual, the piece of paper, like the recognition paper, and then, and then a clock with his grave. Sort of like as an appreciation, as a gesture. And then today, I met Armand out front of Town Hall, and we did the same passover to Ellen Duggan. And I was grateful to be a part of that. And because they've, they've, even in only two years that I've been here, they've meant a lot for me. Been very valuable as advisors and mentors and, and sort of like cheerleaders. And I appreciate that a lot.
Thank you. All right. Before we go any further with ours, I also do want to introduce, we also have State Senator Jamie Eldridge and State Representative Kate Hogan joining us tonight as well. I think they each have something to say as well. So would you, Senator Eldridge, would you like to go first?
Sure. Yeah, thank, thank you so much, Madam Chairwoman, to the whole board, to Greg, to everyone at the meeting tonight. Thank you so much, and thanks for, for taking myself and Representative Hogan out of turn. And I really just want to say, I'm just so impressed with how Maynard elected officials, staff, volunteers really have run, you know, town meeting and these different board meetings really, really smoothly. And just great job with the technology. So thanks so much for having us. And yeah, I'm, I appreciate being invited to present, I guess, virtually citations to Bob McCarthy and to Ellen Duggan for their leadership as volunteers on key committees in, in, in Maynard. I do not actually have the citations with me. They're at the State House, so I don't go in too often, but I'll, I'll get those, I think tomorrow, actually. But first, just want to thank Bob McCarthy for his 15 years of dedicated service to the town of Maynard as a member of the Finance Committee. Finance Committee is a particularly difficult committee these days is, is part of COVID. I really want to thank you for your years of service on that committee. Maynard's Financial House, if you will, is, is in very good order. And really a truly thriving town. So I appreciate your service on the Finance Committee. So congratulations, Bob, and I will get you that citation. And I want to also thank Ellen Duggan for dedicated service to the town of Maynard as a member of the Maynard Historical Commission and as a representative of the Maynard Community Preservation Committee. Maynard has incredible history, obviously celebrating a particular anniversary this year despite the challenges of the pandemic. So thank you for your service in the Historic Commission. And then the Community Preservation Act implemented through the committee. So many key investments around open space, around historic preservation, around affordable housing that really makes a difference in the town and makes Maynard the special place that it is. So congratulations to you as well. Thank you so much, and I'll be sure to get you the Senate citation. And again, thank you to the Chairwoman for, for taking me out of turn. And, and then thanks again for all, all the municipal officials and town officials do for Maynard. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Representative Hogan?
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much. And thank you, everyone, for inviting us to celebrate Ellen Duggan and Robert McCarthy. Truly, truly, truly those kinds of people that when you turn around and say, this needs to get done, that needs to get fixed, how are we going to figure this out? These are two people that have always, always been there for the town of Maynard. I've been around a long time. And whenever there's someone solving a problem or working on a committee, you can be sure that one of these people are, are working and looking forward and protecting and investing and ensuring that Maynard moves forward. So I will start with Ellen Duggan in recognition of your dedicated service and leadership as a member of the Maynard Historical Commission, the Susquehann Centennial Committee, and all that is good and that happens in the town of Maynard. I don't have a date certain for how long. I would say Ellen Duggan has been doing good things in the town of Maynard forever. So thank you so much, Ellen, for all the work and all of the investments you've made. It's something I think you should be very proud of. And I am very proud to have known you and worked with you in, in any of the capacities that I have as well. So congratulations. This will be in the mail tomorrow, and we will be happy to send it off so that you have it as well. And please, best to Neil, who I met when we were out doing Meals on Wheels locally, and he drove me around for an hour or so one day as we visited seniors in Maynard. So please send my best. Next to Robert McCarthy, 15 years of dedicated service on the Finance Committee. And that is never an easy job, but we know that with Bob, what he was able to do was create ways where meetings and groups talked to each other, where the Finance Committee talked to the School Committee, talked to the Board of Selectmen, and worked closely in order to be able to develop financial projections, forecasting models. And sometimes people don't want to hear that. Sometimes they'd rather just keep moving forward. But it really does help. And I think that all the work that you have done in developing the kind of impactful committee that is able to not only look to the present, but also look to the future is well, well, well appreciated by the town of Maynard. And so thank you so much, Bob. Truly, truly a local hero for Maynard. Thank you so much.
Okay. Let's try to clap on Zoom. Can we do that?
Thank you, Kate. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Any words from Ellen or Bob? I was gonna, I was gonna say, Ellen, would you like to say something?
Just, this is very much appreciated. It's nice to be acknowledged. It means a lot to me. I think you all know how I feel about my old hometown. And I've been lucky enough to be able to, to give back, and that's important to me. But thank you. This is, this is very nice. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Bob, do you have anything to say?
Feels like an Oscar, so I'll do an acceptance. The thing I want to say actually is, like, like they say on the Oscars, I'm in great company. Ellen has been, you didn't give more than a tenth of what she's been involved in. I know that she's been involved in search committees. The list goes, you know, very far onward from even what you were able to fit in a short speech. I'm, I'm really honored to be even thought of in the same company. And as much as I really appreciate you, Kate and Jamie, last night, when, when Jeff and Greg came, it was Maeve Johnson that was most impressive. She was there giving me this, this award. And she's five years old, so we're gonna get her on the Finance Committee as well. I just want to let you know, Greg, she's coming. So thank you so much. No, seriously, it's a, it is an honor, and I really appreciate all the fun times we've had together. And most of them have been actually really enjoyable. There have been a few times I've been accused of putting up scary slides. But we got through it. And I'm, I'm not going away. I just wanted to say that. So you're gonna have to do something else a couple more years from now, because I plan to be here for a while. Thank you again.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Ellen. I do want to say real quick, just my two cents, which is that when I was running for Selectmen, I believe that Ellen was the first person to find me and seek me out to speak to me before I even won a seat on the board. And I have seen shades of her dedication in the three years since then. And it has been an honor to work with her. And the same with Bob. Bob has, is known for those scary slides every once in a while. And I know we've gotten into some heated discussions before. But I also think that sometimes those are the discussions that you need to have and you need to push through in order to get to the other side, so everyone can come to understandings. And I think that Bob's never shied away from having those conversations, and I think that that's really valuable in our town as well. I think the fact that it was said that our town is, is in a fairly good financial situation is something to be proud of. Because I don't know if 15, 20 years ago, that was something that could be said. And we're not without our struggles, absolutely. But I think having people who are dedicated to watching our finances, like Bob and, and other members of the Finance Committee, is, is just so valuable to us. So, so thank you very much for being such a good steward with that.
Thanks.
Anyone else have anything? No. All right. Well, then.
Congratulations to you both. If I quickly, just a quick comment. Back when I first joined the Finance Committee now with 14, 15, 14 years ago, the first person I sat down next to at the first meeting I went to was Bob McCarthy. And so I quickly became understanding that Bob knew what he was talking about, and I felt way, way out of place at that, at that, for the first year or so, where I felt I was learning every single day from Bob. And so I wanted to thank Bob for, you know, all of the encouragement that he's given, not only to me, but to the community over the years. And, you know, and I'll say this about both Bob and Ellen, the greatest thing about it is, you know, they started off being people I met and spoke to, and they grew into friends. And you can't say much more about that. For Ellen, the comment I would make is, when I first decided I was going to run for Selectmen so many years ago, you know, I reached out to a few people and they, and said, you know, who in town do I need to speak to? To sort of get a grasp as to, you know, what is Maynard really about and looking for? And Ellen's name was one of the first ones to come up. And I did learn very quickly that there was a reason for that, because she had not only the history, but she had so many insightful things to learn about Maynard and what we were all about. And, you know, Ellen is a treasure for our community historically, and I don't mean that in the length of time that she's been here, but just how much she knows about our community. And it's such a pleasure to call Bob and Ellen friends. And I look forward to the years to come, because I do know that they'll be continued to be involved. So thank you both very much, and congratulations on a well-earned recognition.
Thank you, David.
Thanks, David.
Right. Anyone else?
On behalf of the Town's Historical Commission, many words have already been said, and I won't repeat them, but and I think the folks who have spoken already understand Ellen is a force in the town. And it ties back a little bit to David Gavin's comments. Having been here a long time, she just seems to have knowledge of all the things that are going on, the recent curfew bell thing. And we didn't even know about it, but somehow Ellen knew, and all of a sudden, we have a whole project. She's the one who initiated the Mill Marker Project, which, if everything's still on schedule, they're supposed to ship from the factory either today or tomorrow, but we're waiting for confirmation. So her value to the town, her love of the town is just, it's truly unique to Maynard, and she is, in fact, a treasure, truly outstanding. I've worked less with Bob, but I share some past with him in terms of companies we might have worked for. I've always found him to be someone who has the best interest of the community at heart and really wants to get structure in place so that we as Maynard can continue to succeed in the future. Valuable insight, valuable perspective. We have two really good folks that we're honoring tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Thanks, Jack.
Thank you.
Enough. Move on, get some work done.
Fine, fine. We're already behind schedule. No. All right. Well, then I will just close and say thank you both. Thank you for, to Senator Eldridge and Rep. Hogan for being able to make it tonight.
Yeah, and congratulations to you both for being reelected.
Yes.
Yeah, congrats.
Congratulations.
Appreciate that.
And, and thank you again to Ellen and Bob.
Right.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
All right. So then I will move along, as I've been told. That is fine. So we'll go back to item number four, which is acceptance of minutes, and I will entertain a motion.
I could do that if you want. Move to accept and approve the minutes, the meeting minutes of October 20, 2020, as shown, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Sorry, did I have a second? Oh, thanks, Chris. Any discussion on the minutes? All right. Then I will take a vote. All in favor, Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you very much. Onto number five, correspondences. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve and accept correspondence A through E as shown.
Do I have a second? No, thanks, Armand. Any discussion? Any? Nope. All right. I'm trying to think if I had anything. I apologize.
Hey, Kate could have hung around and read her own report.
For a report, right. And, and from Jack McKeen was the Historical Commission as well.
Well, Jack's still here.
Yeah.
Hi, Jack. Sorry. We're reading your letter, your letter from the Historical Commission.
Yeah.
All right. So all in favor of approving the correspondences A through E, Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes. So thank you, thank you. Next, we will move to consent agenda, and I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda, item A and B, as shown, in accordance with all applicable federal, state, and local public health and safety guidelines.
Second.
Thank you, Armand. Do we have any questions on this? I don't know. Greg, do you want to say anything about it to start, or?
No, I mean, like, so for the holiday lights, it's, you know, per year. I mean, like, we do every year. We, we were trying to identify like a different way to the procedures for it, but we're not, we're not complicating it this year. We're trying to, we're just trying to get the holiday lights up, and then we, and we have the funds. And then for the, I mean, obviously, the, the event itself is going to look different. But as far as like the, the, I, I would recommend the board approve this to use the Memorial Park and, and as we have traditionally. And then for the town property, oh, yeah, so for the Metro Kung Fu West, I think Mr. Prisby is just trying to, he's trying to get as much time as he can out of, out of outdoor use for his business.
All right, sounds good. Anybody have any questions, concerns? All right. All in favor, David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Perfect. All right. Next, we will move to item eight on the agenda, which is the Historical Commission Time Capsule Excavation. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to authorize the excavation of time capsule as part of the Susquehann Centennial Celebration per the request of the Maynard Historical Committee.
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. Greg?
Well, I'm gonna bounce pass it over to Jack.
I just go to Jack.
But just to say that Jack, Jack has already, had already spoken with town staff, specifically Department of Public Works. So, yeah, Jack, why don't, why don't you tell them why it's a good idea?
It's literally Justin requested this. For the Susquehann Centennial, there is a time capsule in the wooden box in Town Hall. Lots of folks don't know there are two more. One is buried at the Coolidge School, one is buried at the now art space. They're on public property. So Justin is rightfully saying, hey, I will help excavate them, but it's public property. I would like a note from the Selectmen authorizing this to happen. So that's the purpose of the request.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Jack? Or I know Justin's on the call as well, if they have any questions for Justin?
He's got the shovel.
I have no questions. Sorry, go ahead.
No problem. Go ahead.
No, I have no questions about the, the issue at hand, but I do have a comment. Jack, has there been any discussion from the historical group about creating a 2020 time capsule, especially?
I could think, I could think of a few things to put.
Yeah. And then putting it away for the, for, you know, 100 years or whatever.
The answer is yes. That's both the Historical Commission and the Susquehann Centennial Committee. And there is an activity or an action underway to create another one. One of the proposals is take the existing box in, I think it was Justin's proposal. Take the box in Town Hall, which on one side says to be opened April, yada, yada, 2020, whatever. Literally use the box. We have four sides for the box. But yes, there will be another time capsule as far as I know.
And we were supposed to have a, and maybe we had it, and I just missed it with COVID, but we were supposed to have a grand opening of the, of that box at some point. Has that been canceled, rescheduled? Are we gonna do something different with that?
It's been rescheduled. I don't have the date.
Okay, all right.
Excellent. Anyone else have any questions, comments? Concerns? All right. Then, all in favor, Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well.
Real quick, Jack, how old are the two time capsules we're talking about?
Um, about 50 years. The individual who buried the one at Fowler Art Space may, we may ask him to dig it up, because he knows where it is. So it's about.
That was good. I like that. He's been around that long. That's great.
Well, that's Bill Goddard, by the way. And supposedly, there's a map for the one at Coolidge. The one at Coolidge, we're a little uncertain about, but.
Hopefully, there's a lot, not a lot of digging gonna take place.
You gotta find the map first.
I'm picturing a Goody's scenario.
Yeah, exactly.
Paul Boothroyd is our go-to guy there and so forth. And obviously, with Coolidge transitioning to private ownership, another reason to get it out.
Get that figured out sooner rather than later. All right. Then I guess we will move along to the common Vic license for Aviva Trattoria. And I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the change in hours for Aviva Trattoria, five digital way, as presented, and authorize use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Armand, second. Thank you. Greg?
Just, it's just a change of hours, so it's, it's relatively procedural. But, but also keep in mind, I mean, with, with the recent governor's orders, this, this is only applicable so far. So, but the, I think the change in hours seems probably consistent with their business model and, and I, staff is, you know, we endorse this. I think it's fine.
Greg, are those hours consistent with the standard hours that we have in town?
You mean per our regulations?
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe they are.
Yeah. The only reason I ask is just, and I don't know if there's also any other regulations within the zoning that's over there that would restrict this beyond, and just want to make sure that that's not the case.
That's a good point. That's a good point.
I think Becky's shaking your head no.
Becky, you mean no as in they don't conflict? Because I admit, I did not check the settlement agreement. I know what you're referring to, the special permit. I did not check with that. But Becky, what's your understanding?
Yeah, when we forwarded the application with the hours on it, Rick, Bill, Chief, the chief, the chiefs, no one brought that up at that point in time, so I can't see that it was an issue.
Right.
But we want to make sure that it isn't before we approve it, right?
I mean.
Just because, just because they didn't recognize it doesn't mean that that's not the case, and I'm fine, as long as it doesn't violate the.
We can ask them tomorrow, and if it's, if it's an issue, we can hold it, but I
Yeah, I recommend.
Fine within the regulations of.
Can, can we amend the motion to say subject to confirmation, there is no conflict with existing zoning?
Yeah, you can.
That regulates.
What's that?
Wouldn't that take precedent over anything we're about to do?
It should, yes, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, that's a good point. I mean, like, I I'm, I'm pretty confident that that, that Bill or Rick or whoever would have caught something, but you, but you're not wrong to sort of make sure that it's all, it's all on the up and up.
Yeah, and I I just don't want a butters to be surprised when something happens, and then, you know.
No, me neither, so I, I think we could, I think having, so if, so Madam Chairwoman, if you would entertain that motion, I think that that amendment, excuse me, amendment to that motion, I think, I think that sounds fine, just to make sure that it's applicable for all pertinent agreements, special permits, or or planning board policies.
So if it could be accepted as a friendly amendment by the person who made the amendment, accepting it as a friendly amendment.
I I accept the amendment.
Thank you. Do I have a second on the acceptance of the amendment?
Yeah, it's a friendly acceptance. Second.
Thank you, all right.
Becky, do you have?
Yeah, I have it recorded.
Thanks, Becky.
Thank you.
I did have one other question for you, Becky, and I apologize if it, if it's in front of me and I can't see it. What are their current hours?
Their current hours are opening at eleven AM.
Okay, so we're not going any later?
No, it's earlier in the morning.
Earlier in the day.
And that would, and that would be significant, because I think the bigger problem would be later in the, in the evening.
Yeah, no, this is just for earlier morning, they were going to do a brunch.
And that's, that's fine, either way, just, let's just make sure it fits into the zoning, that there's no.
Yeah, I, I think they're doing brunch on Saturdays and Sundays, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Yeah, they're basically moving hours earlier in the days so they can do a brunch if they want.
That's good.
All right, sounds good, so all in favor of the amend, the motion as amended. Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes, so thank you. For that. We'll move along to another common Vic license. I will entertain this motion. For somebody?
Move to approve the common virtual license for Market Basket six digital way, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
So it's a common Vic entertainment and automatic amusement license, yes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Armand. Greg?
So I, I would just say that the staff does endorse this, but you can see that the staff has been working with Market Basket, who's represented this evening by Mr. Quigley, Paul Quigley, so we can hear from him from a second.
Good evening, sir.
Hi, how are you?
But this is, you know, we, we, we were, we're excited about this, you know, having, having the common picture of license, and the entertainment license, I believe, is so that they can have some mechanical rides out. I think it's a standard, you know, like, having, having the mechanical rides out front.
Three licenses, Greg.
Yeah, but it's so, is it, so the entertainment license.
Food.
And the.
Automatic amusement.
That's the one he was trying to figure out why, what, what, what is amusing, that, you know, they're gonna have a little.
There's little rides out front, you pay a quarter or fifty cents.
Right, right.
So Mr., so, so the staff endorses this, I mean, it will be subject to further, you know, making sure that, that all the, all the various other applicable permits go through. But as far as these three licenses, I would endorse this. Mr. Quigley, do you want to introduce yourself and tell people what you're trying to do?
Hi, I'm Paul Quigley from Market Basket, and thank you for having me with you. Yeah, we, we have also a television set that goes in a cafe as well, that, that goes with that license. There will be the amusement rides, which are kind of standard for the store. And and again, we have the salad shops and the sub shops that also go within that.
Okay, so the question I'm going to ask that everybody wants to know is, when does it open?
Can I say soon?
Fine.
We are, you know, we're, we're doing a lot of the finishing touches now, we're wrapping up refrigeration, electricity, and we're working with the departments in the town of Maynard right now to get all final approvals, so we're hoping to have something soon. We, we don't have an exact date just yet, I wish I did, but we should be seeing that in the next, I would think, in the next few weeks, we would get a date out there.
Great.
You're gonna disappoint a lot of people, Mr. Quigley, because I've seen social media reports that it was announced that it's November thirteenth. So you will not confirm that, so that should go, anybody watching on social media should post that that's the wrong date.
I can confirm that's most likely the wrong date.
All right, well, that, that means don't believe everything you read on social.
That's right, surprise, surprise, huh?
All right, anyone else have any other questions for Mr. Quigley regarding any of, any of his licenses, licenses for Market Basket?
Yeah, we look forward to that opening.
Thank you.
I think we all feel the same way. It was a lot, it's a long time coming. All right, so all in favor. Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well, so congratulations, good luck, and hope you guys open soon.
Hey, thank you very much.
Take care, sir.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, next. Why don't we go for the, the discussion first, and then we can do the motions afterwards. These are appointments for firefighters. Greg, or do you want just Chief Sowers to start?
I'll just have Chief explain.
All right, Chief.
Hey, we're, well, one of these people's already been on for quite a bit, so we typically do swearing in, as you, as you guys are aware, but with COVID, we had to put that off. But we came to find out that they've been doing swearing in in front of the police station outside, so we're appointing two new people, they start Monday, so we're gonna have all three of them sworn in next Friday by the town clerk.
Perfect, if you let, if you let us know when, I think we can probably try to have a representative from the Board of Selectmen there as well. That's what we've been trying to do with the police officers also.
Okay, I think we've scheduled already a time scheduled, I'll get that out to you.
Yeah, perfect.
And I should be available, I'd be happy to attend if, if, if necessary. I just need to know the time.
Yep, I'll get that to you tomorrow.
Sounds great, all right, so continue on, so you're, you're replacing two firefighters?
Yes, we're replacing, well, one, one that's been on for a while actually replaced Captain Gray. And then we had two people go to Marlboro at the end of September, so we ran a process, we had fifty-seven applicants, we narrowed it down to twenty-five or twenty-six, did a skills review, we narrowed it down even further, we interviewed twenty, I believe, and we have a, we still have a list to pick from, but these were the top two candidates of that group, so we're very pleased. One of them is a young lady from, she's originally from Hudson. She is on the Ashby Fire Department, and she's a very, very impressive young lady. The other one is a firefighter in Greenville, South Carolina right now, but he has ties to Maynard, his wife grew up here, and they wanted to move back to the area for personal reasons, so he is very, very qualified, and we're very, very excited to have him as well.
Okay. And are any of them on the call right now? You said one of them had been on for a little while.
I, I think you meant on the force, I thought the same thing that you, I thought the same thing you did, I'm looking around for them.
You know, Alan Porter started back in January.
Got it, sorry.
Well, yeah, yeah, Alan came to us from, he's a call firefighter in West Boylston, and he actually worked in a science lab before he came to us, so little different background from what we normally have, but he's doing very, very well and fitting in very, very nicely.
Excellent, how is it having, having, because I know we've, we've had our share of more serious calls of late, how is it having the, the younger, the younger ones on the department? Because I know sometimes it's hard to have, when you have a lot of younger people on the department, inexperienced, I guess, as long as.
That's been a challenge for us for the last few years, but Captain Mike Parr takes care of our training, he oversees that, and he has actually a very good program in place, so it's a little different for us, because we try to hire people with experience, that's a very, very big thing for us, so it's not necessarily giving them the skills to do the basic things, it's just getting them to do it our way, so that usually doesn't take too, too long, so we've had very, very good luck.
Great.
Been in well, assimilated well, and done very, very good job at all of the fires and the COVID cases and, and everything that we've dealt with this year, and and I will say, it's been a very, very busy year. Our calls dipped a little bit when COVID first started, but as we came out of that initial wave, the calls came back with a vengeance, we're actually averaging more than a call a day more than we did a year ago, and certainly two years ago, so that doesn't sound like a lot, but over the course of a year, that's a lot, so.
What, what type of calls, Chief, are up?
Well, our fire calls are, are actually up a little bit, but EMS, you know, it's always up, so, but we have a little bit usually seventy percent or so is, is EMS in most communities, we're about sixty-five percent, so it's a little bit of everything. Of course, EMS calls are up, surprisingly enough, we're not doing a lot of COVID calls, people just transport themselves to the hospital in those situations. But we are going to a lot of places that have suspected COVID cases, where we have to put all the PPE on and make sure that we don't get ourselves contaminated. But I would say across the board, it's been a pretty even progression as far as the increase goes. We've seen a lot of calls up at one twenty-nine Parker Street, which we suspected we would, with sixteen digital way especially, but we've seen quite a few at you know, at the, at the apartment buildings as well, so not unanticipated. We do expect them to go up even more as that place gets built up more, and we do have a new housing facility in, in Maynard that's really been very, very busy for us, so hopefully that slows down, so a little bit of everything.
I do want to take a second and, and commend the fire department for their responses, I mean, on, obviously, on a, on a daily basis, but, you know, you've had two high-profile, or, or, you know, bigger profile fires in the past month, and, and from all accounts across the board, from residents, from, you know, people in other towns, everyone talked about the professionalism of the fire department, how they were able to control the fires, how they were able to work, and, and I think it's something really to be proud of, so, so thank you very much for.
Including the, including the residents, residents of that, of the building.
Yes.
I'm glad to hear that.
All right, so then I will, does anybody have any questions for the chief before I go into that? Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
I will move to appoint Alan Portis, Janine Herro, is it Hero or Herro?
Yep.
Hero. And Joseph Doyle as firefighters as of November thirteenth, twenty twenty, for an indefinite term, authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Thank you, Armand. And any further discussion? All right, all in favor, Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well, so congratulations, Chief, I think you're up to full compliment now, so.
We will be on Monday.
That's a good thing. All right, thank you. And you're probably hanging around for the next thing, which is, which is information regarding the CARES Act reimbursement application, I will entertain a motion for this, start off.
I'll move to authorize the certificate, am I on the right one, move to authorize, to approve the certification of the application for round two of CARES Act funding, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Thank you, Armand. And Chief, do you want to speak to, or Greg, who wants to speak to this?
I mean, Chief wrote a memo, but this is, just to kind of summarize, you, Chief did a great job of like describing and defining where we are, but to clarify, this is for CARES Act, which is separate from FEMA funding source that we're, that we're also doing, but which Chief has been on top of expertly, professionally, the whole time, so on both, on, on both, and all the other sort of complications of all this funding stream and whatnot, and applications, and being in contact with the state, and being in close contact, of course, with our own finance team, primarily Michael, though, and whatnot, but also with the school side. And, and that's no small undertaking, and so I appreciate all the, all the effort that Chief has put into managing this, it's a lot, and it means a lot, of course, to the town, and it means a lot to, to the community, but, you know, and to the departments and whatnot. And admittedly, like, you know, were we, were we badly, badly suffering? No, we were able to kind of like, keep things relatively controlled in Town Hall, and but especially with the schools coming, come back on board and reopening and whatnot, this has been really instrumental, and then, and Chief sort of Chief has been, she's been critical in that success, I would say, in trying to get the schools back up.
Greg, to bounce off of that comment, and Chief, I don't want to put you on the spot here, but I want to comment on, one of the criticisms that I think we probably have all heard, again, going back to social media, on social media is that the town has failed in certain areas relative to the schools, you know, people were relaying the fact that we had that we had a cut in the school budget, and we're trying to say, you know, we needed all this stuff for, for COVID and everything else, and we weren't being able to to get it for the schools, instead, we're cutting their budget. Can you just confirm, and I see in your memo, I think it was three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken, was the second round of of, of CARES Act application, and your comment, I think, was that the majority of it went to preparation for the schools type thing, so can you assure the community that we didn't cut the schools' opportunity or to get CARES Act money to, that they're not digging into their own budget in order to get, you know, the proper safety documentation for the schools and everything else, can you just confirm that for us?
Yeah, so one of the misconceptions, I think, about the CARES Act is that we can use it for anything we want, it, it doesn't work that way. There's very specific categories that, that you can use it on. Majority of what we requested so far has been for the schools to take care of their IT needs and some of their training needs. We can't just use it for, for staffing the schools, so one of the, one of the problems that we have with CARES money is unless they come out with a new round, round three, or a new appropriation, is all the money has to be spent or accounted for by the end of December, so you couldn't fill a position, and you'd have to lay somebody off in December if you did that. And there's really no, there's no spots for it, so I've worked very, very closely with, with Wayne over at the schools, we've had a couple of meetings, we had another one two weeks ago, and we've given them everything that they've, they've requested, everything that they've asked for, so I would say that that's just a rumor, and it's false. Anything that they've needed, we've gotten for them. Now, the PPE that we've gotten for them is, is separate, we bought, we bought in bulk, so what we did for the schools, just like we did for the entire town, is we bought it in bulk, most of it's being stored in the basement of the Town Hall, as people need it, it gets appropriated from, you know, sent over from, from there. So we have, like, I think Greg mentioned this earlier, we have two different funding sources, and one of the dangers that we have is we're putting a lot of the PPE and some of the things that we did for both the annual town meeting and the special town meeting in the FEMA box. While if it's not covered by that, then we transfer it over to the CARES box. Another issue that we have is whatever we've requested of FEMA, which to date is about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, only seventy-five percent of that is covered. Remaining twenty-five percent will have to go into the CARES Act, so, you know, we've got to be careful with just saying that we have a lot of, of a pile of money, and we can just move it around wherever we want, every penny's got to be accounted for, so that's, that's false. Now, one of the things that the public probably doesn't understand is there's three parts to the CARES Act. The part we're doing, we're dealing with is the municipal side of it, there are two other parts of the CARES Act that the schools are dealing with, that have nothing to do with the town, so the, the staffing and the things that they're getting, that they, they need for staff should be coming out of that, so I hope I answered your question, but.
You did, you did, thank you very much.
Doing what we need to do for the schools.
Yep, good, thank you. Yep, good. Thank you.
I do also appreciate the one of the final lines of your memo that you, I mean, speaking to that PPE is that you do say that you're confident we have. A cash or PPE large enough to sustain us through at least the spring, but hopefully, hopefully through all twenty twenty-one. So that is that is great as well. Do you have, do you? So it looks like, you know, just kind of a quick calculation, you know, we have roughly about two hundred and fifty thousand, maybe two hundred and fifty thousand dollars left. To spend, which would be round three before December thirtieth. Do you know of anything else that's kind of in the pipeline that that needs to? I'm sure things are going to come up, but I'm just curious if there's anything big that you're looking at.
No, there really isn't. And we've, we've, this has been a stretch to get what we have. So when you request this money. There's a, there's certain fields that you have to populate in the application. And one of them is other, but they don't recommend that you do that because you're under more scrutiny if you do that. So everything that we've requested so far, we've kind of put in different buckets and we'll use it as needed and we can move it around as long as we don't. Kind of spend it on things that are not covered by the CARES Act. So. We've requested and received six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to date. But remember, whatever we don't get covered by FEMA has to come out of that, too. So. We already know right off the top of our head that we're probably going to spend another forty just for the stuff that FEMA doesn't cover. And that's not including the things that we're moving, that we're purchasing between now and the end of, well, now in December, if it, you know, if we need more things that. Are going to come under the FEMA box, only seventy-five percent of them are going to be covered. So. The six eighty-five that we've taken so far is. That's strictly CARES Act stuff and it doesn't include the other things that are going to fall into that that category by the time we're done.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions, comments? All right. Then I will. All in favor to approve. Let's see, David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris? You said yes, but you're muted.
You read the lips.
Yes, I say yes twice now.
Knows how to read lips.
And I. Thank you. All right. Item number thirteen is. Is the receiving a request to change the name of Columbus State to Indigenous Peoples' Day. The presenter for that. Apparently needed to reschedule the presentation. So we're just going to table this until another another meeting. And when they reach out, we'll we'll put them on the, you know, the agenda coming up for that.
But the presentation is already attached, so we could actually, we had a chance to read it.
True.
Yeah.
True.
So it's good to have to have that information ahead of time.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. No, I was just, we had someone who was going to come in and present to us. So that's perfectly fine, though. Yes. So we'll table, do I, I don't need to make a motion to table that right now. Okay. Continuing on. Next is to consider approval of a land swap for the Acton Winter Street, Acton slash Winter Street. Greg?
This is, this is pretty complicated, but my understanding is the board may already, some members of the board may be familiar with this already. But I wasn't, I was kind of vaguely, I recall some of this as I was applying for this position. Couple of years ago, I kind of remember that this topic being brought up, but fortunately, we have Katie Young and Katie, Katie's all over it. So. Katie, if you're, I think she wasn't online. Katie, can you?
There.
Hey, there you are. And Katie, by the way, moved and so she has a new background and.
Got my lovely eight foot pond tree behind me.
Definitely, yes.
So Katie, can you, in as layman's terms as possible, try to, in like elevator speech, try to break it down what's going on?
So back in two thousand and eleven, the owners of one twenty-four Acton Street. The Quirk. Either trust or family, I'm not quite sure, approached the town about. Potentially buying a piece of land abutting the state crime lab. And that's in the packet you have. The first image shows the property location, but it's not that entire property. It's actually a two acre parcel on that. On the plan, I think it's referred to as parcel B or two B. Okay. And yeah, I know it was a little confusing. I didn't realize that I accidentally highlighted the whole thing. So yeah, it's not the entirety of that. It's just two acres of that. And so at the time, what it was is that the town wanted. To acquire some land from Quirk for. The rail trail in exchange for that, but they realized that it wasn't enough of a. A swap. So what had happened was at the time Quirk said that he was going to purchase. The property known as eighteen Winter Street, which has been on, you know, the list of land to acquire for conservation and open space purposes. Back at least to the late nineties from what I've seen. And what had happened is. You know, Conservation Commission land is protected by Article ninety-seven. And when you take it out of article ninety-seven, it has to go. To the state legislature to be voted out of that. And then there has to be like the equivalent land swap. So basically, the idea was we would give them the two acres of land at Rockland Ave for the twelve acres of land. At eighteen Winter Street, which is the land across Taylor Brook and Thanksgiving Pond from the DPW garage facility. At the time, at the two thousand and twelve town meeting, it was approved, both, both the. Acquisition of eighteen Winter Street was approved and the sale of the two acres. Next to one twenty-four Acton Street were both approved by town meeting and the state legislature approved the swap. But I think at the time, there. Someone in the Quirk family had passed away, so everything had kind of stopped moving forward at the time. And recently, in the last couple of months, I was approached by representative of one twenty-four Acton Street. Saying that they were still interested in the going forward with the acquisition and. Speaking to legal counsel, they pretty much said the first step in this would be to have the Conservation Commission vote and then the Board of Selectmen vote. To move forward with the land swap agreement and the conscom will be voting at that on that. At the November tenth meeting next week.
Okay, so in theory, um, thank you, first of all. And so in theory, the town body has already approved this swap.
Yes.
Okay.
They basically had approved negotiations to go forward with it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any questions for Caitlin?
Question. Chris, do you remember having this discussion back several years ago?
Twice.
Yeah, and I, I don't remember, I don't remember, though, that it passed town meeting. That was the.
So the first time, the first time it was, it was going to be. The first time it was supposed to happen is about the time. The original Mr. Quirk passed away and that drew the whole family into chaos. And then, and then. They came back with the lawyer guy and their lawyer ended up being part of the family. He's a relative. He's one of the quirks, but he's the kind of the son-in-law. And that's when they came back when Terrence was on the board.
Right, that's what I remember. Yeah.
The new guy who's making the push. I can't think of his last name. His father is the, is one of the guys who is like a starter at the golf course because he reached out to me. Through his father and was like, oh, you know, we're going to do this and we're going to do that. But. I was wondering, there was a lot of questions about what they intended to do with the land behind the building. And I think that that has to play into whatever decision we make, but, you know.
Yeah, there was some concern at the time. I remember there being a lot of concern about the fact that how that land was zoned, how it could be used. What were we actually agreeing? You know, were we opening up the possibility for things that we didn't really understand could go there? And that so we're getting land out, conservation land. This is just my recollection of the conversation. That we're getting conservation land out there in the middle of nowhere. And and they're getting this other land right there along Acton Street that could be developed in some way that we don't anticipate or even as. A parking area to expand their parking, which I think was part of what they were talking about. Then there was some concern that that was going to be such a big parking area that it could be really just a storage area for buses or trucks or, you know, whatever. And again, Maynard has given up some prime land for, in exchange for for nothing. And there's an impact on the on the area. That's sort of my recollection of, we wanted to have more certainty as to what we were getting ourselves into. But to hear that we passed town meeting, that surprised me.
Well, that was, that was, I think they passed town meeting in the summary. What was it? How long ago was that?
October two thousand and twelve.
Yeah, so that was a long time ago, but I mean, a lot has changed since then, too, in that area and other parts of town. And then. You know, the land we're giving up is land that we might use someday for something and the land we're getting is swampland.
Right, that's, that was the discussion that we had. I remember that.
I don't know that we want swampland.
Could I, could I comment on the?
Please.
The properties themselves. So the two acres that abut the one twenty-four Acton Street, it's all mostly, it's very steep ledge. That property was acquired as conservation property through a, I think, failure to pay taxes. Back, I want to say at least thirty or forty years ago. The reason why one eighteen Winter Street is, you know, on the top of the list of properties that the Conservation Commission wants to acquire. You know, one, it actually, like, there is a good amount of swampland there, but there actually is a lot of upland, which contains vernal pools. That actually are not certified yet by the state, so they are at risk. Also, you know, the property does abut the rail trail at this point and it abuts the National Wildlife Refuge. So, you know, potential down the line of. Coordinating with the refuge to create another entrance off of the rail trail in Maynard or just extending recreation off of the rail trail itself. But I've, I've actually been wondering, you know, what their game was with the parking lot because having stood right there at the edge of that. Two acre parcel, it is rather steep. I'm not quite sure how they necessarily. You know, engineer a parking lot. I was actually wondering if they were trying to get more. Area for the entirety of the lot. In order to maybe. Build out more of the one twenty-four Acton Street lot down the line. Because, you know, per the zoning in the industrial zone, you're only allowed thirty-five percent lot coverage by building. So that's, speaking to their legal representative, he didn't give me too much information on what they want to do at this time. But, you know, that's some information I can try to get before, you know, this is voted on at the next meeting.
Well, are they, are they going to be coming to the Conservation Commission as like a representative quirks?
I had asked them, yes, they haven't gotten back to me, but I believe their lawyer should be coming to the conscom meeting.
Okay.
One other, go ahead, Greg.
Well, I was just gonna say, we know, obviously, we can invite them. I think it's appropriate anyway. So I did, I would invite them and I would expect the board would want to hear from the quirks as to their intentions.
One other question, not that long ago, we were also talking about, as I look at exhibit two, Caitlin. Where where the proposed swampland, not swampland, but swampland is. We had a discussion not that long ago relative to connectivity. Was it with, was it piping or something where we were talking about how? How we would connect water to.
The wildlife.
Refuge.
Yeah, the wildlife refuge. Is this land part of that? Are we then giving up land that we have already?
We're trying to.
Gaining it.
Trying to get.
So we would be gaining.
But then we'd be giving up land to give to the, to access for. For the pipeline that we were discussing. And I don't know if it's the same, if it's the same land or not.
David, I can answer that question.
Justin could probably.
Yeah, I can answer that question if you want.
Yeah, sure.
So that that area right there has nothing to do with the potential service connection for the wildlife refuge.
All right.
And just to add another note, there is a potential easement for our raw water line to White's Pond that actually goes through this property underground.
So is that a benefit or not a benefit to us to have if we already have an easement?
So we don't see, this is the issue with the, with the raw water line and the, and the extreme cost of White's Pond is we don't have a technical easement in writing. That's the problem. The raw water line was a handshake agreement between the military and the town of Maynard a long time ago. And part of the expense of putting White's Pond online is is a large amount of legal fees to document this and work with the federal government to delineate a. Hard easement. We know the pipe is there. That's our proof, but we would have to litigate that in court and it becomes a land battle a little bit. So. Gaining this does help us, at least from that aspect, is we would only be dealing with one party, which is the federal wildlife, which is the. They fall under the Department of State. But if we don't, we would potentially have to make sure that we deal with this property owner as well in regards to White's Pond hookup, so.
And so exhibit two shows land that is currently owned by the Quins.
So exhibit two. Let me make sure I've got the, so what it is, is they're in a, I believe, a purchase and sales agreement with the current owners?
All right, yeah, I remember that part, too. Okay, there's a triple, there was a triple swap going on there.
Yeah, it's, it's a little convoluted.
Yeah, I remember that now that you mentioned it. Okay.
The, so one twenty-four is the Forensics Crime Lab, right?
Yeah.
The, the, the two acre lot that of that twenty-one acre, is that cover any of the recreational trails that are? Out in the Rockland Ave?
No, it does not. Yeah, that's a little further down Rockland Ave. Where this area is, it's, it's, it doesn't show the. Contours on here, but it is, it is a very steep drop off right there.
It has the contours on exhibit one.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. So you can see it here on exhibit one. It's.
It's a hill.
Yeah.
And so there's no road access to that without going through. Anyway, because Rockland Ave, as I'm seeing on the the map where it's plotted out, is not the Rockland Ave as we, you know, accepted it. What, about a year ago now?
Are you looking at? The screenshot or the actual plan?
I'm looking at the plan between exhibit one and exhibit two where Rockland, Rockland Ave no longer exists. What I'm trying to say is there's no current road access to that site that doesn't go through the. Forensics Labs parking lot. Is that correct?
Correct, that, that, if that lot two B was. Separated off, the only access would be through the Acton Street lot. I mean, technically, right now, two B is part of two A. So, you know, you could get through it from the other side, but, you know, at that point, it would just be through one twenty-four Acton.
Right, unless they, I don't know, looks like whoever the L wells are, if they still own.
Yeah, they're there.
They do.
So maybe they'd have to work out a deal with them.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm interested in sort of having an idea, an understanding of what their plan is for that, for that land, just so the abutters have an idea as to what's going on. You know, it may be, it may be a great deal for us, who knows, but seems like deja vu because I think this is exactly the discussion we had the last time.
I'm interested to see exactly what the two acres are.
They're, they're on the, right after exhibit one. You can see it sectioned off as lot two B right close to the. Forensics crime existing building. Yeah, it's basically on the parking, basically it busts the parking to the forensic lab.
Yeah.
Correct. And they had told us at one point, I thought that they were going to use it for parking.
That's, that's something that I've seen as well in past correspondence. I was able to dig up on it. But it does, it, I mean. You can really, you can engineer all kinds of stuff, but it is a rather steep, steep cliff. I was, I'm almost wondering if, you know, they're trying to go for the, the space.
Yeah, your, your, your explanation makes more sense.
That's.
On two B or not two B?
Yeah, that's right. It's two A to be.
So let's bring them in and see what they have to say.
Yeah, yeah.
Awesome. I will let them know.
All right.
To be discussed.
To be. All right.
I gotta say, I thought it was the whole twenty-one acres when I first looked at it and I was.
I apologize.
He was ready to grow a farm.
I copied and pasted the wrong, the wrong screenshot onto that one.
You did good.
All right, next is going to be the town boundary survey.
Again?
We haven't done it yet.
We haven't done it yet, so.
Where are we going? Where are we going, Caitlin?
That's okay.
That's what we're talking about today.
Katie wants to know, is there, is there any?
Katie wants to know, is there is there any uh uh? No, I was, I was gonna say suckers, but it's actually probably.
They totally want to go.
So, right, you gotta drop around the wood. The, so Katie's Katie's looking for any volunteers. Does anyone from the board want to be the volunteer to go? Oh, okay, so you have a couple, Katie.
Yeah, so I've got I've got two to three folks. And um, I know we had discussed previously about making this into sort of like a, an event.
Right.
But, you know, with the pandemic, yeah, with the pandemic going on, um, I don't think that's the wisest idea right now. But um, pretty much tonight is to discuss, you know, scheduling and when we want to go out and do it and, you know, seeing who wants to do it, because it has been about a year since we last discussed this, because, you know, the world's changed. Um.
Yep. So Chris and Justine are, we can, we'll be in touch and kind of figure out.
I think Jeff raises, right, he's.
Yeah.
Oh, Jeff, you want to do it, too? What, so what, do you have to go from the town hall to the marker or how's that work?
So we have to find all five of the bounds and um, you know, take a look at their positioning, take GPS coordinates and.
Like treasure hunting.
Pretty much. And I found them all last year at one point, right before we were gonna do it, before we got the crazy early snow. Um, and so I'm probably gonna have to go out and re-find two of them, just to make sure I know where they are before before I bring anyone else out. Um.
You don't want to take some wild goose chase, it'll be fine. Come on.
You know, it's it's fine until you're on like someone's private property that you didn't notify accidentally and and then people are wondering why you're there, because um, we're gonna probably have to sit a a couple of weeks from now, just because I want to notify all the property owners for the private property. Three of them, the access isn't an issue, there's just two where um, it's, you gotta go through private property to get there. And it's up to you guys. We can try to do them all in one day, or we can split it up between two weeks. Um, you know, we we can discuss more.
Caitlin, don't you have to like put an M on it or something? You have to mark it literally?
Yeah, so we're gonna have to uh paint the year, um, you know, that we have marked the bound or, you know, preambleled the bounds.
This is like landing on the moon, you know?
Yeah, and I will say, I have to try to figure out what to do about one of them, because I believe one of them is incorrect. Um, it has Sudbury and Maynard swapped, and you can't really argue that Sudbury is really towards the river and Maynard away from the river um at this one location. So um, that one might take a little bit of time, but luckily it's a very accessible one, so literally, we can drive to that one. Well, the thing is, we can't even just turn it around, because it's, if we turn it, it's still gonna be wrong. They're like swapped on the wrong sides.
Katie, coincidentally, didn't we just get notified by?
Yeah, so, so, yeah, Stowe's starting theirs, and they actually, one of the Board of Selectment members reached out to me today. I haven't had a chance to respond to her, because they invited us if we wanted to go with them when they go to the two markers on Stowe, two of them, the one on Reddick, Reddick, Red Acre Road and the one in the Orchard. Um, we have another one with them that's down in the Refuge, but they're putting that one off during due to hunting season, even though hunting is not allowed. Well, it's weird, because hunting is not allowed in that area, so I'm not sure, I don't know. But um, so, you know, once I figure out the exact dates for that, we can see if we can attend with their, you know, small handful of people as well. Um, but I don't know when they're going yet. They said they'll email me a couple of days in advance, but.
Actually, I thought the one, because we got notified as well, we got an email from her also, um, or I did at least.
No, I did, too.
Yeah, but the town did, I think.
Yeah, right, and and then Greg forward.
Right, so I thought it was, they they said the first outing is scheduled for this Saturday, um, November seventh.
Um, I think they were playing, I think they originally scheduled that, but I I don't know if it's a hundred percent set in stone yet. Just because, kind of like, I sent out letters last year as well, saying you're gonna do it on that original day, and it didn't work. So um, I'm gonna touch back with them and see when they're gonna do it. I mean, worse comes to worse, we do it on our own, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Plus, I don't know what size group they're gonna have with them.
Right.
And that might be a little iffy, so.
Yep. All right, sounds good. Um, anyone have anything else for Caitlin about this?
Yeah.
Uh, who's, yeah, oh, Jack.
The um, last time this was done, the then town administrator rented a van, had the appropriate representation. It was all done on a Saturday morning. Uh, Paul Boothroyd is a resource for this, and he knows the families that own the property. There are two in Stowe on private property. There's one in the Wildlife Refuge. The other two are basically publicly accessible off Route twenty seven. And up in the development, I've forgotten the name of it, up off of uh Potomac Road. The four towns come together, and yeah, that marker needs to be replaced because it is incorrectly marked, and you could rotate it any way you want. And as Katie said, it still won't be correct. Um, so whatever the group wants to do, but it's not on the process.
Yeah, there's really only three that are a little bit of a walk. Two of them are right on the road, so. One's right off of a trail in the Refuge, one's up the Orchard Hill, which is a little bit of a, it's a steep hike. It's not a long hike, but it's a steep hike. And then there's one off Red Acre Road, kind of back next to some swampland in some brambles.
Okay. Fun. All right.
Here, Justina, just say.
It's been a pandemic. I'm excited to get outside. Come on now. Go for a walk. Wear a mask, that's fine.
I mean, well, as of Friday, I think we all have to wear.
Yes, that's true.
At the time.
Yeah, and just watch out for the wild turkeys.
On public space.
Yeah. And I would recommend if anyone has a.
Bring in my dog with me.
There you go.
Wild turkeys.
I would recommend, you know, if anyone has, you know, reflective bright clothing to wear it, you know, we're we're not gonna be.
Especially if it's hunting season.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I mean, technically, you know, being as close to the road as we're going to be, we shouldn't have to deal with it, but you never know, so.
All right, Katie, thank you. Thank you. Katie will follow up with with with.
All right, thank you, Katie.
Anytime, thank you.
All right, so let's move on to, um, all right, let's move on to item fifteen. I will uh, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the lease purchase agreement for the acquisition of a two thousand twenty one Toro Groundmaster four thousand D Roughmore in authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
All right, um, Greg.
So this is just in accordance with the uh special town meeting, um, vote to approve this lease purchase agreement so that we can get the new lawnmower. So so you've kind of heard heard this before about why we're doing it. So this is just the actual agreement to to start that lease program. Uh, Justin, do you want to add anything, any any clarifying, or or if the board has any questions? It's kind of procedural at this point, but I I don't want to I don't want to assume that the board is fully aware, so if you.
Uh, is everybody muted?
Yeah, someone's flushing the toilet.
Brian, can you, thank you, okay. So does the board have any questions otherwise, or or Justin can explain further? Does the board have any questions?
Don't have any questions. Uh, Justin, do you want to, uh, do you have anything to add?
Um, no, unless you have questions. I think the board is well aware of of this product, uh, this process and this product that we're trying to procure. That's all.
Fantastic. Uh, nobody? All right, then I will uh, go for the all in favor. Uh, let's see, Chris.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Armand.
Yes.
And I am a yes, so thank you. Um, moving on to fifteen B, which is the Green Communities Annual Report Submission. Uh, Justin, do you want to speak with it, speak to this?
Um, I think the board is um aware that we have been a a large recipient of the Green Communities um process within the state. Uh, Jeff, this might be your first annual report, so I'm assuming you might have some questions, but this is uh the process of staying in line with DOE R's um designation. We have to provide annual report. We look towards long-term goals of energy reduction. It's part of the grant process, and this is uh the time of year where we uh, where we put together the annual report and submit it. And um, it opens us up, once accepted and approved, it opens us up for next year's grant cycle.
Anyone have any questions?
So, you're you're not wrong, Justin. I um, I've done a little, do we have any um, are there any building codes or anything that would interact with, say, the new fire station, or if we get there a new school? Um, that would involve energy efficiency that is related to the Green Communities designation?
No, no, so um, anything, depending on how we build out the fire station. Um, if we typically, the Green Communities is looking to close gaps in older systems. That's why um recently, actually last year, um, because Maynard has been such a large recipient, we were actually downgraded in the availability of funds that we could receive. There's a, there was always a two hundred thousand dollar cap, and now Maynard has um, has kind of reached a level with some other communities where we are only eligible for a hundred thousand, because we're gonna run out of energy efficient products to replace. And as you build new facilities, you tend to, uh, the designs and architectural designs tend to already implement those energy efficient resources.
Okay. Anything else? All right, uh, so I will, actually, I didn't entertain a motion before that, so I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the Green Communities Annual Report Submission for two thousand twenty as provided and authorize the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Thank you, Armand. Uh, all in, any further discussion? All right, uh, all in favor, Jeff?
Uh, yes.
Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Justin.
Yes, thank you very much, Justin. You do realize that I ask for approvals with where you are on my screens. That's why it changes every once in a while. When I lose you, then it takes me a second.
Yeah, so don't move.
Exactly. Uh, someone logs off, it reshuffles, and then I can't find any of you. All right, um, so I will entertain a motion for item sixteen.
Okay, move to approve the certification of the votes taken for bylaw changes at the special town meeting held October third, two thousand twenty, in authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, David. All right, uh, Greg.
So um, we needed a full-time town clerk to be able to submit to the Attorney General's Office the 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 votes, the certification of the votes, uh, so we could have the those uh bylaw amendments or any new bylaws um approved by the Attorney General's Office. It's just standard procedure after town meetings and and it's specifically for bylaws, so that's both the general bylaws and for the zoning bylaws. Um, but without a town clerk, uh, town council advises that the Board of Selectmen can can give that certification. So it's all an online submission. It's it's a, all three hundred fifty one municipalities have to do it, so it's it's pretty, it's pretty kind of clear about what the submission is. And I provided a link, because it's it's a public, like, you can all see what has to be submitted. But if I can have the board certify the votes that we're taking, that were taken by Michelle Jenkins at the time, the town clerk at the special town meeting on October third, she took the minutes, they're they're, I uploaded them here. So if you if you certify those minutes, which is we certify the votes, um, then we can we can we can include that in our submission to have those bylaws uh reviewed by Attorney General's Office.
Okay. Hi, does anybody have any questions or comments for Greg, or I see Joanna on the call as well? Um, anyone have any questions? At all regarding this? All right.
Okay.
Hearing hearing nothing, uh, then all in favor to approve, Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Uh, David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes, so congratulations, it's been approved.
Yep. No, thank you, thank you, thank you. It's just procedural stuff, but yeah, yeah. Good.
Get in the business of the town then.
Yep.
All right, um, next is item seventeen. Uh, I will entertain a motion for this from somebody.
All right, I'll read it. Move to approve the special election on December sixteenth, two thousand twenty for the ballot question to see if the town will vote to appropriate.
Actually, Chris, I'm sorry, let me interrupt you, because I actually changed the, I think you're reading off a piece of paper that you printed earlier. I changed, I I I changed the motion earlier today. So I I had bond counsel. I had, I know, I threw you off, I'm sorry, Chris, but I I I had bond counsel give a new um, I well, I asked bond counsel, like, what what what, how should the vote be to make sure that we that we can do it properly? And so they gave me, they gave me language, and so that's the language that I think the.
Why don't we, how about if I read that language?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Better. I move to approve and notify the town clerk of the approval of the Board of Selectmen to hold a special election on December sixteenth, two thousand twenty to vote on the following proposition two and a half debt service exemption ballot question. Shall the town of Maynard be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition two and a half, so-called the amounts required to pay for the bonds to be issued in order to pay costs of construction of a fire station, including all costs incidental or related thereto, in authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved?
Do you have a second? No, thank you, Armand, for the second. Uh, all right, Greg.
So, so thank you, Chris. So um, so the the town meeting did approve the debt exclusion for the new, for the construction of the new fire station. Uh, but about a debt exclusion, like any other, so that that's a, again, that's above Prop two and a half, which is what the motion speaks to. And that requires two actions, one at town meeting and one at a special election. So, and that that second action has to be within ninety days. Now, I, we were, we were, we misunderstood. Originally, we thought we could have this this follow-up election in January, like in but unfortunately, we need to have it within ninety days of the of town meeting per mass general law. And so December sixteenth is the date that was proposed. I I talked with Joanna, I talked with the the, and besides, uh, and additionally, the sixteenth is actually a Wednesday. So I I asked the superintendent's office when might be good to to schedule the use of the auditorium. That's pretty, you know, per the standard election procedures. And they, and uh, Brian Haas said the sixteenth, the Wednesday, because uh, school, like the. And so um, so that's that's where we are. So if it, what I, what I'm also working out is to to, is to see what sort of additional requirements may be. Like, what what else do we have to do in two thousand twenty um for for elections? Because the Secretary of State had had mandated a number of new procedures for elections in two thousand twenty, as you are very familiar with, we just got through with the presidential, but um, so I want to see if any of those, and I hope not, apply to just a regular general, uh, right, regular special election. And it's just for the one ballot question. So it's, it's pretty straightforward, but um, anyway, I have a, I'm I'm waiting for the Secretary of State's office to get back to me, but I I think they've been pretty busy, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna hit them up again, probably Monday. And uh, make sure we're all set. But this, this will be, this is the step towards getting that election.
All right. Greg, the motion's not so, or is it? Is it, is this reflective of the question that will be on the ballot?
Yes, this is, so I.
Isn't there supposed to be a dollar specific on the ballot?
Apparently not. I mean, this is exactly what I asked town, uh, bond counsel to give. I can, I can follow up, but this is the, this is what they gave me. I'm trying, you know, like I, I.
Yes, otherwise the town doesn't know how much they're asking to override.
Well, they, the town already approved at the town meeting.
Yes, but this is a separate vote. If not everybody who is at the election box or the voting box will be, had been at town meeting. So they're now, they're looking at this and they're saying, looking at the motion as it's here, and I, and if it's, if it doesn't need to be there, it doesn't need to be there, but if somebody goes in to vote and they weren't at town meeting, and they look at the ballot, and it has uh, it's basically a blank check for the town to, I know it says the amounts required to pay for the bonds, but shouldn't the towns, shouldn't the voters know what that amount is?
I, I understand the point you're making, and I, and I, so, yes, I mean, like, of course, that's why, that's why we did, obviously, we were very clear and straightforward about it at town meeting, so we.
I'm not suggesting otherwise. I just think that for the uh.
Yeah, so I think, I think, I mean, it's, so I, if I recall, it's sixteen million dollars, and 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 it will. Yeah, so I think, I think, I mean, it's, so I, if I recall, it's $16 million, and it, and it will continue to notify in, in any means that we can, right, so whether that be, I mean, I'm not sure, like, we have multiple forms of communication with the public, so we'll, so we'll make sure that when this.
My, my, no, my point is not relative to getting the, the message out to the public now, but rather on the ballot, if the motion is supposed to be reflective of what's on the ballot, then shouldn't we tonight, in the motion that we're approving to go on the ballot, have the dollar amount in the motion?
So I would.
And it's not there.
I would disagree only because it should be reflective of what was appropriated at town meeting, so I can't do more anyways.
Right, but, so hold on one second, Greg, and the only reason I'm interrupting is Becky seems that she has a question, something as well, so.
Well, at the meeting on November 17th, we'll actually have the verbiage from the town clerk to sign the warrant, and that warrant will have the direct language that we will be.
Okay, so, and that, that makes sense, so the motion that was just made is not reflective of the question.
Not necessarily, there could be a slight change once we get the final warrant language that we will be voting on at the town meeting on November 17th.
I guess that's possible, but that's not what bond counsel told me.
So I guess the, the question I have is, are we gonna be able, is there enough time? And I'm sure this is the way, this is what we're doing, so, so there is enough time. Is there enough time to get it approved on the November 17th meeting to then order the ballots, to then get the ballots back and send out, if we end up having to send out others to regarding the, the people who had requested ba, all ballots in 2020?
Have to have absentee availability, yes.
Yeah, so no.
Do, do.
No, we wouldn't be able to do all that, like, wouldn't, no, like, that's, like, that takes, I don't think so, I mean, like, we would have to start printing ASAP, so that we could get all the ballots out in time.
You don't have an official warrant for, from the town clerk for us to sign, and.
That's why this, this mandate.
It has to have the posting of where you're going, for what precincts to vote at.
Right, so this, this is, that's why this mandate can't apply, I mean, I can't imagine the Secretary of State's office is trying to, is trying to, like, basically cripple towns by doing, I know I'm speaking, all right, so maybe, maybe I should, now you know how it might be on this, but I.
You're on, you're on record now.
If Secretary Galvin calls me and says, I'm crippling you, I'll say, for this special election, yes, because it, it's a, it's a, it's.
Yeah.
Resources that I believe is, is not necessary to meet them, to meet his intentions of the election of the presidential election.
Right.
So, let me just, and I'm sorry, I keep interrupting, but let me, one second, because I see Joanna actually showed her, she's showing her face. So I'm wondering, do you have anything to add here, as we're sitting here, kind of talking around you about something that actually is going to affect you?
Well, I just did a dress rehearsal yesterday. That I think went really well. So I, I think we'll be able to pull off whatever we need to pull off. Time is of the essence, Becky and I talk every morning on that timetable. I've talked to all the, the, the equipment vendor who makes the ballots, so they know all this information is coming. So as soon as we get the language firmed up, which Greg and I thought was what Mr. Silva had read, so we'll just verify all that, get that language correct, and then just get it all ready, and try to make it happen if we need to.
Okay, is, is there a need for, I'm just trying to get it out there, and I, Lord knows, we don't need more meetings, but if for some reason there's a need for a meeting next week to just, you know, get that firmed up, you know, if, if this isn't going to be the right wording, and we have to vote on something else, then, you know, I, I'm personally not opposed to just having a meeting just for that, so we can make sure we can get that done as fast as possible.
Well, thank you, we greatly appreciate that.
Yeah, that's, that's a good offer, and I'll, and I'll probably take you up on that if I have to.
Sorry, the rest of the board.
No, I, I, I think it's important that, you know, you don't want to take a vote, and then have it, and then even have the election, and then have it, have it learn that it doesn't get certified, because the language on the ballot wasn't correct.
But I, so I would still recommend that you approve this, you don't have to, but I still recommend that you approve this language this evening.
And then if you learn subsequently that we need to put the dollar amounts on it, we'll meet again.
Absolutely.
Because we'll need your real signatures on the warrant, so, you know, whether or not we drive around to your houses to get the real signatures on the warrant, and then we need the constable to come in and sign, so it can get posted properly.
Yeah, yeah.
And so this election, I'm assuming we're gonna kind of model what we've done with absentee voting, but not early voting, is that the plan?
No, I, I, so, I mean.
Yeah, so there's no, there's no early voting.
This is all in person, no, all in person, or absentee also?
Joanna, what's your understanding, do we have to do absentee voting? You may not know, and I, maybe I'm putting you on the spot, Joanna, but do you, do you, do you have any awareness, do we have to do absentee voting for just a, a local special election?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so, so that, I'm just trying to kind of streamline our costs.
You're, you're talking, are you talking two different things, absentee voting versus early voting?
Yes, I, yes, I'm different training, yeah, that's right, so like, I'm not, I, I hope I don't have to open up town hall for two weeks, you know.
I was asking about absentee, not early, where, where they would be mailed a ballot, that will happen? Or not?
I, I was, and I was thinking early voting, where you have to staff somebody downstairs and have town meeting, a town hall open, so people can come in and vote.
So I would, I would like to, I would like, I think you're asking the questions that I already asked the Secretary of State's office, and I haven't gotten a reply back. So I'm, I'm, I would like, I will clarify, like, I will, I will confirm those things, because I, I, obviously, we need to know so that we can, we can make those arrangements. But I'm not trying to disenfranchise anybody, I'm only, I'm just trying not to, like.
No, you're trying not to screw up the system, so that then it gets invalidated, that's, that's the whole purpose of it.
Yeah, yeah, and so, so I'm, these are good questions, and I, and I, I get the points that you're, you're making about what we have to provide, and so I'm trying to get.
Brian, you're unmuted again. Go ahead, Jeff.
I, I just want to say, with the pandemic still on, giving people the absentee vote, you know, the option to be able to vote without the person-to-person contact, I think mail-in ballot doesn't require the staffing, could be a good way to do that, so have the absentee ballot without the, or then, you know, maybe, maybe you have to, but my guess is we could probably do it all in person from a legal standpoint. I would still want the absentee voting by ballot, so that if somebody is immunocompromised, or is a high risk, they're, they're not made to physically go to the polls to vote.
Sure, no, it's a fair point.
What are the time constraints of the, of the, those ballots, Greg, do you know?
Like, when do they have to submit in?
When do they have, when do they have to submit the request to get an absentee ballot, when do they have to have it returned, all that stuff?
Jo, Joanna, what do you?
There's a whole date line, so absentee ballots are up until noon, usually the day before your election, because those are just gonna go to the election poll and be put in during the day of the election.
So, so I guess, I've, I've never used an absentee ballot, but what, 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 what does someone need to do to qualify to get an absentee ballot?
You request it.
Absentee ballot is usually, I'm going to be away, I'm going to Florida for the month, I won't be here to vote, or as Jeff said, I'm compromised and can't come, and they would request they'd come to town hall, they still come to town hall, but it can be by a meeting, we can do it outside, and they request an absentee ballot. A mail ballot is a, is a bigger, much more cost-involved process. We mailed out 5,700 ballot packs for the presidential election that we processed within a, you know, they came in, and we mailed them back out in a five-day span, and then every day, we would just the prior last two weeks, we would get 100 to 100, 200 people coming in our building for early voting, and also 100 to 200 pieces of ballots coming back from the mail ballot. Every day that, you have people processing those. Now, the early voting is usually 10, seven to 10 days. For this election, they went to 14 days with Corona, they did it all in a 14-day span, and we were open those everyday 14 days. And what Greg was saying is that when people signed a card for the mail-in ballot, it gave them the opportunity for 2020 to have all ballots mailed to them. So that's why we're nervous now, that with this last election, that's in 2020, those people signed a card saying, I want my mail ballot, so are we obligated just for this one town election question to mail them all the ballot? And that's what Greg has reached out to the Secretary of State to get clarification on.
Right, yeah. I, I, my sense is you probably are obligated in, under those circumstances, but I don't, I don't know, and I think we need to get the answer. But, but absentee ballots, to Chris's question earlier, for example, somebody who's at college, that they can apply for an absentee ballot, that gets mailed to them and then mailed back to the town. Somebody who is, you know, in the military, who can apply for an absentee ballot that's overseas, has to get time to get that ballot to them and back. They're entitled to an absentee ballot, so then it's, there is a time limit, a time issue involved in getting ballots out and back. I doubt there'll be too many college kids, because I think most kids from this year are coming home around Thanksgiving time, that's what most schools, I think, are doing. So kids won't be at school, but some of the other ones, even business travelers that are often the absentee ballot people that aren't going to be in town, they won't be traveling, so absentee, I think, is probably less less likely than somebody who wants to just do what Jeff is talking about, and doesn't want to go to a populated area to vote, and would rather do it sort of offline, so to say, offline voting. One-off, yeah.
I'm pretty sure for the absentee, the early voting requests for the primary and the general, it specifically enumerated those two elections, so we might be, you did not, are you sure?
It had, it had three options, it was the primary, then it had the primary and the, and the presidential, and then it had all elections in 2020.
All right.
Yeah, but the intentions were probably just for the, those first two, so, but I, I'll, I'll get clarification.
But then why would they have put the third choice?
That you don't have to do the first two, so you don't have to, so you only have to check one box, so that you only have to do, you don't have to choose two, but I know it sounds silly.
But if the choices were the, the generally, primary.
Yeah.
Or the primary.
And the, and the general. Primary, and then it was the presidential, and then it was all elections in 2020.
So that, so that if you, if you forget, both those two, you can do, it's very, it's, I think like a bureaucrat, like, you got it, you gotta, like, think, like, give the option for all of the above, and that's, that's what they did.
They unintentionally gave the option for all.
Right.
Okay, so to be deter, so we will.
Can you vote?
Yes, 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 sorry, sorry, I'll get into it.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Nervous, I want to make sure we do this, that's all.
All right, so, um, we're voting on the language that was, the motion that was made. Um, and, and we are aware that that language may change, and we may have to reconvene to approve a different language, but as of right now, we are voting to approve this language, and all in favor, David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Greg, sorry, not Greg, Jeff?
Yes.
Chris, who's on mute?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you, and I am a yes, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
I don't even want to listen to those dogs, Mark.
Oh, the puppies. All right, Greg, which, oh, all right, sorry, first, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the policy statement for the FY '22 budget as shown.
Do you have a second?
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, and Greg?
So, so per Town Charter, and I, I included the excerpt down in the, in the budget cycle as described by the Town Charter, the, the Board of Selectmen are supposed to issue a policy statement every year by the 15th of November, so, which you do, and it's, and I, and I, and I, it largely is the same, because we, because we, we try to kind of keep expectations kind of stabilized for the budget every year. And, but with, with the, the concept that will still entertain budget adjustments, right, so, so if someone can justify an increase or a substantial decrease, of course, we'll entertain that, but this is, this is my proposal for the Board of Selectmen's consideration to approve as the policy statement. But, but I've already given, on the backend, I've actually already been receiving, hopefully, all my department's budget requests for FY '22, so but this, this is supposed to, this is kind of like the procedural part of the Board of Selectmen's input for the next year's budget.
Okay, does anyone have any questions or comments regarding the statement? For Greg? And it seems in line with what we're we need to do. All right, all in favor, Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes, so thank you very much for that. And the next is just, Greg, tell us a little about, tell us a little bit about FY '22.
So I'm not gonna do like the story time I do for the Budget Subcommittee, but I, I will, but I, I'll give you like kind of the big, big highlights, that's what I'll do, so what you. Yeah, 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 the wave tops, because it, most, most of the budget year by year, there's not significant change. But, but, you know, it's, well, I, I'll highlight those kind of, where we think those changes are going to be right now, so looking at the, at that first attachment in the, in the board docs, which is kind of like our one pager that we always do for the, for the development of the budget, that shows, in this case, showing FY '20, FY '21, and it's showing the first kind of two versions, the two revisions of FY '22, and a, after the, after a number of weeks, we're gonna, we're gonna be up to, I don't know, seven or eight, like, it, it, we, we go through this a lot. As information comes in, as sort of we negotiate with the departments, as we kind of figure out where, where the budget's gonna go, how much revenue I might get, that, that this kind of gets massaged, and we get, and then it gets solidified as we get closer and closer to well, really, to Christmas, because I hope to have this all done by then, so that I can write my budget message for you guys by January 15. But, so let me, let me, let me start at the top, so you can see that we adjusted FY '21 so that we could meet what our projected revenue is going to be. But with that being said, that was based on summertime projections, so in the 17th, you're gonna hear, you're gonna hear Angie Merrimah, the chief assessor, give to you like, what, where we are overall with revenue, and then that's gonna set the tax rate for FY '21. But that, that informs what our FY '22 starting revenue is gonna be, right, so how much, how much revenue we collect in FY '21 sets the bar for how much revenue we're gonna start at for FY '22. So for FY '22, you can see that it has the, it has the $31 million, and then it has how much we, we expect in Proposition 2 and 1/2 increase, which is a reflection of the current fiscal year, and then you, and then you have a new growth estimate, which I'm, right now, we just kind of do the standard $300,000 for new growth. And then you go down the line, we are level funding from the state. And I, and if, if Representative Hogan and Senator Eldor Tron, they probably advised me to do the same, like, they, they, they kind of level fund is the safe way to go. The state, state only just released the governor's first round of this fiscal year's budget. I mean, it was the second time doing it, but they were a long ways away from approving this fiscal year, so at the state level, so to kind of hedge our bets, so to speak, I want to make sure we're, we're, we're not, we're not sort of expecting more from the state going into FY '22. Now, that may change, right, so as I said, this is only revision 2A, I mean, there, if we get different information, so be it, but then again, I try not to but we, we try not to bet too much on what the state's gonna do, because it has a long ways to go. Now, another thing I want to point out for FY '22 is the local receipts we are potentially expecting from marijuana.
Yeah, how'd you come up with that number?
Mike Guzzo, Mike, we'll, we'll tell you all day about how he feels about marijuana receipts. But, but, you know, but that's a good question, Armand, I asked the same question, because it's, it's, it's a, it's, it's a projection. It's a, you're, you're saying like, oh, now what I have done is I've asked those, those, the two shops that we've, that we've approved the licenses for, Greens, Green Star and Mass World Spring, I said, when do you expect to open, what's your monthly revenue, you know, they, in their business plan, they, they had to have revenue projections, and then I, I, I get that information, but I can only, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to, I can only trust them so much, right? I mean, I gotta, they're, they're probably gonna sell me a really rosy picture of what they're gonna do for revenue, but I, so I have to kind of scale that down, and then right, and then, but I don't, you know, based on when they open, if they, they're probably ambitious about when they're gonna open, so we set that off, so this is based on, if they don't open until May. This is based on if they don't open until May, what, what, you know, we're, we're hoping to get, and I know this is crazy number, but two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of tax revenue. For those two shops that they open in May. So that, that's, that's a lot, and so, so I need to, I need to be absolutely sure before I. Obviously, before I, before I recommend a budget in January, where I think there will be. And we'll, and we'll know more by then because we'll be further along in their construction schedule. Okay, and then, um.
So this includes the six percent or three percent, which one is it?
It's a, I think it's a three percent we get from.
Three percent, yeah, the second three percent is really, the second three percent is limited in, in availability to use.
Yeah, that's community impact fee, so, so that's a, but I look forward to have a conversation because that, that money could actually save me in capital costs. It could save me in, you know, like.
Police car, et cetera.
Yes, yeah, 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 and so, and I'm, I'm going to get to that actually, so that's one of the things I want to highlight is the capital. So if you, now you look down, uh, to like the grade highlighted area, it has, it has a debt service. It has, um, not, it has debt service for exempt and debt service for non-exempt, which is kind of like the fire station discussion we were just talking about. Like there's, it's, it's what's on the tax rule versus what's added to it, and then, um, non. So, and then you have non-debt capital, which is capital cash, as I call it, but it's, or pays you go, is another way you call it, but it's basically. Money you set aside within your operating budget. Now, we've been trying to do this for years. And as you can see, as debt falls off, you've, you're already collecting that revenue, so you just, you just reallocated towards. Just capital expenses for your operating funds, but we, we started that way last year and ended up having to put it back into other departments for their regular operating amount. And I'm very, and the town is very reliant on free cash for our capital needs. Or capital stabilization, but I don't want to do that, like I, I, I don't want to have to use free cash for that, I would love to be able to just tie in. Regular general fund and, and that way, we're not taking on more debt, we're, we're paying it as we go, that, that's, that's what I prefer. But to do that means, as you can see, I put two hundred thousand dollars. As like the placeholder right now, that's still not going to meet all our capital needs, that's not as much as like Bob McCarthy recommends we do. He was hoping for, I think it was like three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, but two hundred thousand dollars is still, you can see more than we've ever put for that, for that line. So I would love to be able to put at least that amount, we're going to see if I'm going to be able to do it, um, by, by January. Because if you, and now if you kind of look down at the bottom, you'll see, you'll see the, you'll see the bad news, which is what, where, where it always is. There's always, we're always starting the red, and, and now we're in the red by five hundred ninety-six thousand dollars, and that's with those certain assumptions, right? So that's with a limited amount of new growth, that's with no state aid increases, that's with. A two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from marijuana local receipts, so a lot of, a lot of educated guesses. And, and trying to be, and my general approach to budgeting is be conservative, right? Be conservative with your revenue, be conservative with your expenses, like try to, try, try to like. Prepare for the worst, oh, for the best, and that's, that's general, generally my, my approach to budgeting, and that's kind of where we are now, so this is. This is very fresh, but I did share this with, um, the budget subcommittee. And with the presumption that it would be shared with the school committee, with the finance committee, it's all public data anyways.
I, I think, I, I think one comment, um, I don't know where we were when we were at last year, and I say this every year, but. When we were at revision two A last year, my guess would be we were at one point four million dollars deficit when we were having that discussion. Versus five hundred, uh, having said that, I do think the, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar marijuana is quite ambitious. I don't think that's, I don't think it's, it's, I think it's way overestimated, but who am I, I'm just saying, you know?
Right, so you're, you're, yeah, that's what your gut tells you, and I don't think it's wrong, but like, I, so I'm, I. It'll be helpful to me if I see some more numbers, like I'll, I'll, oh, and I reached out to our neighbors, like I asked Hudson how they're doing with their marijuana.
They're doing really well.
Yeah, but it, but it's not to say it's apples to apples, like they're, so.
They're on a main drag, they're, you know, they're right near the.
Right off the highway.
Yeah.
Yeah, but only one shop, we'll have two, so.
Exactly.
They have two now, don't they?
It isn't open yet, I don't think, it's there.
Something.
I don't think it's open yet. Last time I went by, it wasn't open, but, but they're, they're near the highway, but you gotta drive two miles into. Parking someone's backyard and take a van up.
True, yeah, exactly.
No, not anymore, I, I think it's settled down enough. I, I think it's settled down enough, you can drive right up.
Two hundred and fifty thousand is, is, and what do we get, we get six percent?
No, three percent, but, but that's, that's the three percent, that's the estimated three percent.
That's correct.
Is the two fifty, that's a lot of money when you're, uh, you know, you.
That's, well, that's why I asked, was it six, because that was why I thought it was, uh.
I thought we got two, three percent pieces.
Yeah, the other three percent is limited in how you can use it, it's, 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 it's not general budget, it's not general fund.
But it's, it's still two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a whole lot of money.
Yes.
As, if it's only three percent of something.
Yes.
That's right, that's the point, I think it's overestimated, so.
But, yeah, fair, fair, I, I had the same, I, I had the same eyebrow raise when Mike.
What was, what was Gazzo smoking when he did this?
No, he's not, he's not.
I'm only kidding.
But, um, but you know, he'll, he can explain further, but I, like I said, this is like preliminary, it's all preliminary.
Yeah.
And on the expense side too, it's all preliminary, like I, I, um, yeah, so this, this.
But it's healthy discussion to have because we're talking, you know, we're, we're talking real numbers and thoughts rather than just. Paper.
That's, and that's the whole point, I'm just trying to keep the board informed.
It'll be nice, next year at this time, we'll definitely have some raw numbers.
Hopefully, yes.
It's true, and, and market basket, so we'll be getting sales from, from, uh, yeah, so there, there'll be, this will be a totally different ballgame next year.
Yeah, absolutely.
It'll be easy, we'll have plenty of money.
I don't. You don't, but here's another point, is you don't have to spend all that money, so, so in, in two weeks. Angie's going to come to you and ask you what you, what you want to do for your split in the tax rate, and that'll be a reflection of how much revenue you want to collect. And that revenue can be collected if you use all of new growth, but that's not what we're proposing, and I mean, spoiler alert, I'm not going to propose all to use. All new growth, in that way, we kind of, we kind of, like, we're, we're always going to, our taxes are always going to have to, I'm sorry, but taxes are always going to go up. And then, and we're always, we're always going to need to pay for, you know, whether it be cost of living or, or inflation or otherwise, like, like costs of services. Will always go up, and so the taxes have to reflect that, but we, we happen to have a really good economy in this last. You know, because of all the building, particularly one twenty and Parker, but like, there's been a lot of housing turnover and whatnot, so that, so we've had some new tax revenue. And then, but if you don't spend all that new tax revenue, that means you kind of distance yourself a little bit more from the tax ceiling. Which I know these are not concepts that everyone talks about every day, but, but basically. We're, we're trying to kind of give ourselves away from the tax ceiling, which is kind of like the max we can ever collect in taxes. I don't think we're going to have to go that far, but we, we want to be able to have the, the wiggle room if ever the need is, comes up, that, then. And so if you don't use all your new growth, meaning you don't spend, you don't collect in that much revenue, it has, it has some. It's, it's a good, you know, like, it's kind of like the way you want it to go, it means like you're, it means your economy's doing so strong that you have. That you have enough revenue that you don't have to collect at all necessarily to pay for all your expenses.
And it benefits the taxpayer.
That's right, that's right, it's not going to be significant, right, but it, but it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a step in the direction that I think the board and I, and I do too. It's, it's kind of where we want to go, but she'll, she'll.
Two point five percent of the valuation of the town, is that the ceiling you're talking about?
I don't remember what the, if that's exactly what the. I don't remember, I'm sorry.
It's two and a half percent over this year's, uh, uh, revenue.
Different two and a half percent, I'm talking about the, the ceiling.
Yeah.
Okay, 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 okay.
Two and a half.
Good question, Jeff, I don't remember how that is calculated.
And then my, my second question is where are we, which I, I think I looked at the numbers and I want to say we were at two percent and the ceiling was two and a half percent, but, um.
It's, we're close, you're right, so like, I'll find out, I'll find out.
That's, that's eighty percent or something like that, so it's not, it doesn't seem to me like. You know, desperate straits close, but it's. So I, and I, I don't know what our neighboring towns are running at, I just kind of crunched the numbers for ourselves, so I, I would just like to know what, you know. How close are we and is that unusual for, you know, a, a community of our, you know, size and shape?
So here's the thing, Maynard is so unique.
I, I, I know the answer to that second part, so then let's.
That's what I'm saying, like, it, it's not going to be, like, if we compare ourselves to Acton, so, like, we're so.
And, and then I'll, I'll accept the first two.
Like, we're like a small city, so like, and, and the, and the town was built off, off of the mill. And so like, now we're not reliant on the mill, and so we have to be reliant on ourselves.
Point, point taken, but I would still like to know what's the ceiling is and how. We are, so if we're, if we're, if I'm wrong and we're actually at ninety percent, or if I'm wrong, we're actually at seventy percent, those, those are important things to know.
Yeah, we'll get that. Uh, separately, uh, Madam Chairwoman, I also, um. I also shared with the board. The, where we kind of are with the capital improvement plan, so, so by November, for, per the charter, I have to provide a capital improvement, a recommended capital improvement plan to the, to the capital planning committee. Which I did, but with the understanding that this is the first time we, we've had this body, this capital planning, not the first time we've had a capital planning committee, but this. We've reestablished it, and I, and I'll be working with them about how we go about it, so, but there's, but as I just said. If I can't keep that whole two hundred thousand dollars to pay for capital needs, then I have to change my capital improvement plan. So I, it, it's all, it's all kind of in the mix, but I'll be, I'll be meeting with them, they're trying to meet next week. I, I met with them two weeks ago, and, and I forwarded them all the same information, and I forwarded them all the capital requests I got, and I got, I forwarded them. Kind of like where we are with, with the various, um, funding sources. And so we'll be, I'll be working with them.
Okay.
But that's my update for the budget.
If I could, uh, I want to take a quick step back to that new growth and leaving on the table, has the FinCom discussed that?
No.
Okay.
That's more of our decision as opposed to theirs.
Right.
I was curious about that, but.
And, and that's something that Angie, when she comes back to us in two weeks, she's going to talk about that.
Yeah. It's one of those things, I think Angie has been proposing it for, or, I, I mean, I've talked to her the past few years. And she hasn't officially proposed it, but it's more, you know, in the conversations, she's like, this is an option, and you know, when, in a time when. The residents feel a little bit constrained by the sheer tax rate and the number on the tax bill. This is an option of, of a way to relieve at least a little bit of that stress.
It's, it's not, it's, and it's also, and I'm sorry to be the bearer of bad news, but I, we, we did, you, you did just approve a, a, a ballot for a day exclusion, right? So, so it, it all, like at the bottom line. It's, it's not going to be a significant impact, like it'll be, you know, because it'll be your taxes plus day exclusion, plus water rates, plus.
Actually, I, I disagree to Justine's point, if, if we just pass that huge day exclusion, all the more reason for that small amount to try to knock it down.
Yeah, that's Craig's point, yeah.
The more that even a small amount helps, I, I kind of, any.
Yeah.
Any solve that can be put on.
That's Craig's point.
Yeah, 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 but it, but it won't be, you know, it'll kind of shake out even, not, not, not exactly, but I'll just.
I'm just saying, if we didn't have a huge increase, that would make me more tempted to not leave it on the table and say, let's, because eventually. Costs rising, you're going to need it eventually on, at one end or the other anyway, so, but. Pairing it at the same time is a huge, a sizable increase due to the fire station makes sense to me.
Very good, very good.
Excellent. Uh, anyone else have any? Questions? Alright. Okay, so that was no motion, that was just, uh, an update, so thank you for that bedtime story, Greg. And next is actually, uh, the town administrator report, sir.
No, no, so I, I had to update the town administrative report because of the recent governor's. Uh, governor's office orders, um, which I know we've kind of touched on a little bit, but I encourage the public to. Go either to the state's website, go to our website, let's check out my town administrative report, like just, just make sure that people are aware, I'm not going to go, it's, there's a lot, but I'm not. Like, make sure people are aware of what the new changes will be, in which the governor imposed in reflection of like the, the, the spike, so to speak. Um, of COVID cases. Uh, there's a couple of other things I want to highlight, um, the town is trying to move. It's trying to partner, or I'm sorry, work with the regional housing services office, um, who, who we've recently have an agreement with. So that we can do both, uh, in, um. Emergency rental assistance program, which we've already implemented, but now we're also trying to get a mortgage assistance program. But it, it's, you know, it's, we're going to work it as fast as we can, like we're, we can't guarantee that, that it's going to get off the ground, but we're working with the RHSO about it. And, and hopefully we can get something underway, just, just, you know, we're not sure about, you've heard about the eviction crisis. And I don't know exactly how, what the impact may be for Maynard in that, but this might be a gesture towards, not a gesture, but like this might help. If, if we're able to kind of get this going, so it's, I can't promise anything, but it is something that Megan is working on trying to, trying to get.
Would the funding be CPC, so, um, what, what, what would the funding for the mortgage one be versus the rental?
Yeah, good question, I'm trying to remember what that, what the funding was, no, I think it's CARES.
CARES, it's CARES for the.
Yeah.
CARES, yeah.
I think so.
So that's not even our. Our pocket.
Well. It's the big pocket from the.
It's from our CARES pocket.
You already paid for it, uh, but yeah, it's, uh, in your federal.
And your federal taxes pay for it, so.
That's right, that's right, yeah, thank you for clarifying that, so I'm, I'm reviewing the memo right now, and it's, um, and it's CARES.
Is that the one you wrote?
I didn't write this one, I think Acton.
Oh, that's why.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Acton is the lead for the.
Yeah, for the CARES.
For this, for this clever, yeah, yeah, okay, uh, the other thing I want to highlight, um. We're requesting the Department of Housing and Community Development certify our housing production plan. Uh, so that, well, and specifically the reflection of forty-two summer streets. Um, and their, and their local action units, which is like affordable housing units in proportion of that development, which helps us get the. Safe harbor, so to speak, which is basically we can't be imposed upon by developers for affordable housing. And, and it all relates to our housing production plan and the execution thereof, so I just want to inform the board of that, and then, um. I guess two more things I want to go over, the town charter review committee, I, I do, I would like to start getting that underway, so in, in, I'm. It's already kind of late, so I'll send the board, um, my recommendations of who I think should be on it, and then, and then I think maybe one or two. Members of the board act as a liaison to that committee, and then we can get underway with the town charter review, and then, um. Uh, and then lastly, uh, for my town administrative report, I'm asking the board to, to, you know, to entertain the motion. To, I'm looking at nineteen C, to entertain the motion to approve amendment to lease agreement for art space in building sixty-three for one year. But, um, I don't have the actual letter yet from, so I, town council said they were going to provide me the actual language, I'm just asking if the board would entertain this motion. And then, and then we can reflect it in the language.
Okay, so you want us to move to approve this, but we don't, we won't see it until, and then.
It's, is it the existing lease agreement that we already have just for one year?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, so we, we had the agreement in the last, yeah.
Right, 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 yeah. So the language that you're looking for, Greg, for, from council is the language that we're supposed to read?
No, the amendment, so actually, I take, so you could wait, so like, I don't have that amendment in hand, right? I'm asking you to approve the amendment, which is really asking for the extension in the lease, which I believe the board is on board with, so like, yeah, so, I. Alright, I stand, I stand corrected, so like, I, I, I would prefer to have the amendment in hand, um, I don't have it yet, so if, if, um. But I've, I have already sent an email over to Jerry Beck, just telling him this was, this was my intentions. And so, and, and I think he said he would inform the art space board. So I think they're okay, I mean, I don't think, I don't know why they wouldn't be, I don't know why they wouldn't be okay with, with an extension on their lease, um, but that's where we are. Okay, so I.
What's it, what's it, when does the lease, when does the lease, uh, end?
Current one's in thirty.
Number thirty, like in. Eight weeks.
Okay, uh, so theoretically, if we have an, if, if there's an emergency, we could do it at that, at, at, at the next meeting that we just talked about earlier. If we have to have, and if, if not, we can do it on the seventeenth, right?
Yeah, yeah, you can do it up to.
Up until the thirty, the last meeting of the year.
Yeah.
Theoretically.
Yeah. Alright, Madam Chairwoman, I'm sorry, and I've also ran out of saliva, so I think I have to stop talking now, so I'll let you. But if, is Joanna still on the line?
I think she is, it looks like, uh, her, her picture is up, I don't know.
So while I have, while I have the mic, great job, great job to all the election workers, every, everybody, it's, it, it. I, I was, she was there very early, I can't believe she's still awake, um, and she had a very long day last, you know, if. You know, she sent me the email at midnight with the election results, and she got to, she got to the, the town hall at five thirty AM. So, um, long day, good job, Joanna, good job. She can't hear, we can't hear you.
You're on mute, Joanna, if you're trying to talk.
Thank you, it was so much fun, I truly enjoyed it, the people were wonderful, it, it was just such an exciting day, it, it truly was. I loved the school, I'd never been to Powell, it was my first time being in that environment. I worked the polls in Lunenburg for three years, and it was very similar, and I just loved the whole dynamic excitement. Um, I worked the polls in Lunenburg for three years and it was very similar, and I just love the whole dynamic excitement, helping people that, you know, I'm not registered, I'm not active, and and working through all those. We had a great day. We truly did.
Yeah, nice.
And you saw the numbers. Did you get to see all our numbers?
Yes.
So I mean, they they were outstanding. The numbers were outstanding.
Was it eighty-six percent of total voter of registered voters?
Mm-hmm. Yes. Um, and about, it was eighty-one percent. The total was eighty-one percent. Yep, that voted. So um, and about fifty-seven via mail or early voting, and then the rest, we got, we've got a little under two thousand yesterday. So it was a great day.
Great.
Lots of fun.
That's it, Madam Chairwoman. I just wanted, yeah.
Absolutely. No, so um, I thank you. So actually, that was gonna be my first thing as well, is um, just a huge thank you to Joanna, um, all of the election workers, Karen. Um, and obviously, DPW, Kyle and Justin, I know they helped a lot as well. Um, you know, I I appreciate, none of this could have been done with any, without any of you, so.
You are. You're so correct. The poll workers were there every day for for three weeks, nine hours a day. Uh, there's two of them that don't even get paid, and and one was still with me today. Uh, because she just didn't know what to do. So she said, well, I'm coming in again today. I said, okay. Um, but but Justin's team, they, and that's why it was so successful. Justin and Kyle, they know exactly how to set it up. They they know where to put everything and and Kyle brings it all in, sets it up. It it's phenomenal. They come, they break it down. Justin came and checked on me twice just to make sure. I I have to say, the the whole leadership team over in Maynard is is they're just a group of people that want each other to succeed. Um, from the finance with, you know, don't worry about payroll, we'll figure it out, get them on a sheet. From the collector's office, um, you know, they're they're helping book stuff envelopes. Um, the DPW, what they did, every department, and I'm gonna forget people, and I'm sorry, but every department just all work together to make the event successful, and I can't thank them all enough.
Very nice.
I'm I'm truly blessed.
David, David, this is the, this is the team you were talking about.
Yeah.
It is true, though. It is true. And it is, you know, I I really.
Although the public doesn't know I said that.
They do now. Um, yeah, no, thank you very much, Joanna, um, for everything, and for taking it on. You know, I mean, thank you very much for.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, this was, this was huge, so.
It's a great way to get baptized.
Yes, yes, it was. It it truly was. And and it's funny, because on a call with someone from the state, I said that. I said, well, at least because it's very, when you go to school, you know, now, and then in four years, you have your first election, you you don't remember. So at least now when I'm in school, I'll say, oh, that's what I was supposed to do. Yeah, you know, but you know what it, what they're talking about. So that's what I I said to the state. I'm I'm excited. I came in when I did.
That's fantastic. All right, well, thank you. Um, a couple of other things I have is, uh, so I was fortunate enough to go out last Saturday and buy one of the coveted Sessos Centennial books from David Mark. So, uh, and I started reading it, uh, and he, as usual, has done a great job. It's, you know, it's short chapters. It's it's nice little chunks, so you can, you know, read it at your leisure. Um, they are selling them at variety of different locations. Um, but I it, I think it's a book to be proud of. So so congratulations uh, to David and the Sessos Centennial Committee for that. Um, the other thing I wanted to bring up real quick is that I was able to attend the Board of Health meeting last week.
Wait, Madam Chairwoman, I I apologize.
Hold on.
That's kind of a point of order. Are you on your, are you on your chairman's report?
I am.
Okay.
Oh, I forgot the goals. I skipped right past.
So you can, if you want, if you're meeting, I just, I just wanted to, I didn't want.
I was starting the chair report. Fine, fine, fine.
Okay.
All right, let's go backwards to the.
Then we'll go back.
All right, but I'll finish my report.
Don't confuse us further.
Sorry.
All right, I'll finish my report first. Sorry.
Okay, okay.
And so again, I was able to go to the the Board of Health meeting last week. And, uh, you know, I I was, I wanted to make sure that that a representative from from the select board was there just to make sure that, um, you know, they felt that they had support and they could reach out to us on if they needed anything. Um, you know, in light of the fact that the cases uh, in Maynard had gone up, um, and we were kind of watching that a little bit closer. Um, I I'm gratified to see that the cases appear to be decreasing again. Um, I think it's kind of, you know, a an ebb and flow type of thing. Uh, hopefully, we can continue. Um, one of the things that I asked uh, the board was if they had any advice, because I basically said, what happens is people invariably come to our meetings and say, you know, what's being done or what can be done or 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 whatnot. And um, and unfortunately, fortunately, unfortunately, um, you know, they are, you know, the health agent is out, uh, doing a lot of follow-ups on complaints. Um, you know, they are doing some enforcement. They're doing more enforcement of businesses as opposed to personal type of things. Um, you know, but what really came out of it is that, and and I think this is kind of reflective in what's going on nationally with the election as well, is we just need to work hard at being good neighbors and and being and trying to help protect ourselves as a community. So um, you know, we have to realize that we're all in this together. Um, people who wear masks, you know, basically, you're not, you're protect, you're wearing it, so you're protecting people from you, and it shows that you respect people enough to protect them. Um, and and basically, that was kind of their message, is that, you know, we're, we just want to make sure we can protect our community um, as best we can, and the the way we can do that is to be good neighbors um, to each other. Um, so, which which I completely agree with. And I think that, uh, you know, it is gonna be tough going forward with um, some of the some of the mandates that Governor Baker um, brought forward at the beginning of this week, I think feels a little bit constrictive to, you know, to some. Um, and I think it took some people by surprise. Um, so I think that we just all need to have patience with each other, realize again that we're all in this together. We are all neighbors. Um, we all know each other, and we need to have patience with each other. Um, and hopefully act responsibly, which is to wear a mask, wash your hands, practice social distancing, and also follow the governor's mandates um, that he has just put out uh, as of Monday uh, yesterday. Um, so that is pretty much my spiel for right now. Um, but back to selectmen's goals, apparently. Because we missed those. Um, let's see. So Greg, I I'm looking at it, that this is, um, obviously, I've looked at it earlier, but it's just basically a a draft of of what we've been talking about the past few weeks.
Yeah.
Um, does anyone have any questions or comments on the draft as written?
No, that was just based on the feedback you got from us over the last meeting, right?
Yes, it is. So I, based on my notes, I added the strategies. Um, I got some feedback from some of this select board. I inputted it. I mean, so I don't know. So if if you, if you all are, I I don't, I don't, there's no motion. So Madam Chairwoman, it's up to you if you want to entertain a motion, but if um, you can either give me more feedback tonight, you can send me an email. It's up to you guys what you want to do, or you can prove it tonight. It's it's all up to you.
I'm giddy with power. Um, what? Sorry. Um, so does anybody have, so I would be inclined, uh, because we've gone back and forth a few times over a few meetings and hashed these out. Um, I would be inclined to entertain a motion, but I am happy to hear what everybody's opinions are on this, or what, if anyone has a, has a differing opinion on that.
Ready for a motion.
Yeah.
All right. Well, then, hearing uh, no strong objections, uh, I will entertain a motion.
I will move to approve the Board of Selectmen Goals for FY twenty-one as presented.
And I'll second that.
Excellent. Thank you, Armand. Uh, anyone have any further conversation, discussion about about it?
Thanks, Greg.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, uh, all in favor, Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
Nice.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Good.
Um, all right. So now I'm gonna do my chairman's report again. No, I'm kidding.
Put on rewind.
Gonna move on to board member reports. Let's see, let's start with Armand.
Um, just a couple of things. First of all, I purchased the book myself and um, I already started reading it. Now, David does a great job with anything. In fact, I love reading his editorials in the Beacon Villager. I I clip them out and I read them all the time. He just does a fabulous job. Um, and the other thing is that I participated in the Housing Production Plans uh, meeting, um, the first one that took place October twenty-first. It was very productive. A lot of people were very much um, engaged and and, you know, their recommendations and ideas. Um, so there's, they haven't scheduled a second one yet, but um, it'll be coming soon. And um, MAPC does that. The um, they are the group that helps us out. And I also took um, part in another advisory um, uh, committee meeting. That's for the uh, powder mill corridor study. Um, and and MAPC is running that one also. Um, so that was very also, uh, very engaging, very involved. They listened to everybody's input about what they're thinking that's gonna be helpful in developing powder mill and what are gonna be some of the challenges. So um, it was, it was interesting, and I think, uh, you know, I'm looking forward to the next next one too. So um, that's all I got.
All right. Thank you, Armand. Uh, how about Jeff?
Uh, nothing this week. I just wanted to add my congratulations to Joanna and the rest of the staff who worked on the polls in the election, um, especially in a very, one with a lot of national attention, um, fantastic job.
Great, thank you. Uh, Chris? Sir?
Um, I don't have anything really, except the fact that um, little math tells me that two hundred fifty thousand dollars in um, marijuana revenue is twenty-five thousand dollars a day in sales.
I think it was two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. So, but no, I I.
Were you two hundred fifty? So it's it's approximately twenty-five thousand dollars a day in sales. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
Ain't hap, ain't happening.
Okay, fine.
That's all. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't have anything else, you know.
But if it, but if it does happen, it's unbelievable.
If it does happen, great, but that's an awful big ask.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I feel you. Especially if we're building a budget off of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you never know. Hopefully, hopefully, one of them will be open. Aren't they talking about being open by the end of, by the end of the year? Yeah. They're open, but if they actually open by the end of, you know.
That's if you're open seven days a week, fifty-two weeks a year.
Right, but if they, right now, that rev, that revenue, that twenty-two hundred and twenty-five or whatever thousand dollars, that was based on two months. So if you say he'll make, they'll make two hundred fifty thousand in five months or seven months, that might be a little different.
Yeah, two hundred fifty thousand dollars was based on the sales for two months worth?
No, I think it was actually five months.
Okay, sorry.
That's even, that's even.
Makes it even worse.
No, we, that, no, uh, but I'll I'll get clarification, but we basically, so you you certify your, the amount of revenue you collected um, as you, as you kind of move into your tax recap and that like, right, because that's part of how much you're gonna set the tax rate based on how much revenue you're gonna, you're protected. So I know it's complicated, but either way, the point stands, we need to find out exactly. I mean, I don't, I'm gonna need as best a crystal ball as I can get about how much marijuana revenue we're gonna get.
Yeah. That's all.
You just did math for us, huh?
I did it based on a year.
He made, well.
Good, that comes true.
All right, Mr. David.
Yes, um, I also purchased a book. I also began reading it. So I'm learning a lot about the nip buck engines in the first few chapters. Yeah. And uh, and uh, the way the, the way the ground moved and the, you know, the rocks were moved by the earth and, you know, whatever. So anyway, um, I look forward to reading the whole thing. Um, the, I wondered, Greg, our, um, parking restrictions, uh, I know that this is the time of year that we typically vote them in, just want to make sure that it's on the radar.
It's on the seventeen, yeah.
And also, also, I don't know what, if we're, if we want to do the downtown parking meter thing that we do for the holiday season that we typically toss in there too, where we wave the the meter.
Oh.
Uh, and I don't know, you know, especially given this year, where we're trying to encourage as many people as possible to go downtown. Uh, hopefully, the shops remain open um, dur- throughout this uptick. Also, it was mentioned in Greg's um, in Greg's TA report, but um, the the solar team that we have together has has been meeting and looks like we're getting close, but I do want to commend that group. Um, it's a small group of five of us. Um, but um, despite the fact it's not really a, a, you know, a sexy discussion, uh, we've had a real deep, we've really had some, I wouldn't call it debate, but some really good thoughtful consideration given into what's going in there. And I think the bottom line is not only for the benefit of the community relative to our solar production, but the way aesthetically, this, uh, whatever we choose to do is gonna impact the way the school, uh, because most of the stuff, if not all of it, is over towards the school, the way the campus looks. And when you start thinking about that and how it's going to impact for, you know, we keep saying, this is, how is it gonna look twenty years from now? When you've got a solar array there, do you want to have a big, um, you know, a garage-looking roof over the parking area? Or do you want to have something that's, that's, you know, more aesthetically pleasing? And but then, when you, we've been discussing about the need to remove trees and how that will impact neighbors and and things like that. It's been a very, very detailed discussion. We're getting towards the end. We'll have, I think, I think the goal is by the seventeenth to have a uh, a recommendation for one of the, one of the two finalists, but um, that the community should be happy with the fact that that there really has been, and with the school's representation, they're worried about how this, whoever we choose, will be able to incorporate educational aspects into the um, in into having a solar array right behind one of the schools or right on the school campus. So there's been a lot of discussion about which company offers the best bang for the buck, and of course, there's the economic aspect and how it benefits Maynard. So a lot of discussion. The community should be happy, and I'm I'm really excited for when it goes up, and we have the 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 generation. And of course, uh, even on the roof of the high school, you you'll have that too. So uh, exciting stuff to come, more of the the future of Maynard per se um, that everybody should be aware of. So that's it.
Nice.
Great. Thank you for your work on that. All right, uh, is that all? Everybody all set? Excellent. Uh, Greg, if you find the need to um, have any, if you figure out, we need to have a meeting next Tuesday, let us know.
No problem.
Go, go from there.
Absolutely.
All right, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Excellent. Chris, all in favor? Wave hello.
Night, everyone.
Have a great night, everybody.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.